All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the 1,614th regular meeting of the Thornton City Council. And before we begin, just like to remind everyone in the audience to please turn off or silence all electronic devices. Also, if there's anyone in the audience who needs assistance in listening to or participating in the meeting and is not indicated so on the sign up sheet, you can raise your hand and a staff member will provide assistance. Item two is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Athlete allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is a moment of silence. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Item four is the land acknowledgement. Councilmember Ayala, would you please read the land acknowledgement this evening?
Yes, thank you. The city of Thornton respectfully acknowledges that land on which we stand is the traditional territory of the Apache, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Comanche, Kiowa, Lakota, Navajo, Pueblo, Shoshone, and other Sunday Indian tribes and nations who were the original stewards of this land. We honor the history, culture, and contributions of both past and present of these indigenous nations and tribes. We pay respect to their ancestors, elders, and present day community members, and extend our gratitude to the indigenous peoples for their ongoing care and stewardship of the land, water, and resources. We also recognize the lasting impact of colonialism, forced removals, and continued injustices that have affected indigenous communities throughout history and into the present. We also acknowledge the labor of enslaved Africans and their descendants who worked the stolen land for the colonists and who continue to disproportionately face economic oppression, racism, violence, and exploitation. May this acknowledgement serve as a reminder of our responsibility to be mindful and respectful of the land, its history, and the indigenous communities who call Colorado home, and to use it to guide our policies and decision making for the people of Thornton.
Thank you. Item five is a roll call of council. Clerk, would you please call a roll of council?
Mayor Coleman?
Here.
Councilmember Acunto? Councilmember Ayala?
Here.
Mayor Potembigala?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Russell?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember Sandgren?
Here.
Councilmember Unrain?
Here.
Corvus President, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item six is approval of the agenda. Are there any staff changes to the agenda this evening?
There are no proposed changes. Thank you.
Council, are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda, as presented, has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Potembigala? Mayor Potembigala?
Sorry, yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandgren?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item seven is presentations. Item seven A is a resolution conveying the city council's gratitude and appreciation to Shane Brownell on his retirement from the city. Councilmember Russell, would you please introduce this item and read it in its entirety?
Yes, I'd like to introduce a resolution conveying the city council's gratitude and appreciation to Shane Brownell on his retirement from the city. Whereas Shane Brownell has served the city as a regular full time employee for 24 years in a professional and loyal manner. And whereas Shane began employment on May 23, 2001, as a network specialist, was reclassed to a systems administrator I on December 29, 2003, and a systems administrator II on December 5, 2010. His title changed from systems engineer on January 26, 2025. And whereas Shane received multiple team distinguished service awards and team of the year awards over the many years of service to include but not limited to the SharePoint implementation team, the data center disaster recovery team, and the city hall security improvement team. And whereas Shane received the team of the year award in 2017 for his outstanding dedicated service for his work on the Sales Tech software implementation project and team. And whereas Shane received a team distinguished service award in 2018 for his work on uninterrupted power supply replacement team. And whereas Shane received distinguished service award in 2020 for being part of the information technology staff. And whereas Shane has approached his job in a professional, skillful, and dedicated manner with a strong commitment to serve the community. And whereas the council wishes to recognize Shane for the contributions he has made over the years of service to the city. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Thornton, Colorado, as follow. That the city council hereby recognizes the commitment, dedication, and loyalty of Shane Brownell and conveys his earnest appreciation and thanks for the many contributions he's made during his 24 years as an employee of the city. I move for its approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And now I'll open it for discussion. Councilmember Russell, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
Well Shane, you've had a very extensive career here with the city, and I know that we haven't got to know each other very well. But there's always a huge gratitude for those that are behind the scenes and that carry that workload. And the work that you've done to make our city better, as well as provide securities and make sure that we're up to date with technology is absolutely commemorable. So, thank you for your time with the city. We very much so appreciate your work and wish you a wonderful retirement.
Any other discussion? I'll add my thanks in a moment because I'm going to embarrass them when I get to come up front and give them the plaque. Would you please pull the council?
Mayor Potembigala?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandgren?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. And at this time, I would ask Shane and his family, as well as Chris Mullison and Scott Tekavec, to join me in front of the dais. We'll make you stand all the way over here. If you'd stand right here so everybody can see your beautiful face.
Oh, great.
After 24 years of dedicated service to the city of Thornton, we celebrate your retirement. Congratulations. Shane, you have been an integral part of the city's IT team, starting as a help desk technician and progressing to the role of systems engineer. Your contributions have been invaluable, particularly in leading the implementation of the city's server virtualization environment, bringing cost savings and greater efficiency to the systems infrastructure. Shane, your commitment is evident through the many late nights that you spent working behind the scenes, ensuring seamless operations without disrupting the city's internal customers. And on behalf of the city council, thank you for all of your hard work and your dedication to our community. Would you give him a round of applause, please? Would you like to say a few words?
I'm good, actually.
Would you like to say a few words?
I actually started my career a few years before Shane. And when Shane was at the help desk, I was in the city's budget office. And one of the things that we did a long time ago when we were in budget was we went out and shadowed some employees to kind of learn what they did and what their needs were and the resources that they may need. And one of the very few first people that I shadowed was Shane. And he was a brand new employee in IT, and I got to come and spend the day with him. And when he was sitting there at the help desk taking in calls from people, oh, my computer doesn't work, or my software doesn't work, Shane would pick up the phone and work his magic and figure it out. And, oh, okay, thanks, I can work again. And so in addition to watching him do that, I got to spend the day with him. And so in between calls, I got to interact with him and kind of figure out, you know, what an intelligent and funny and resourceful person he was. And in addition to watching him work with customers, who he did very, very well as well, I got to kind of get to know him in probably his first few months on the job. And then later inherit him as an employee when I got to take over management services and IT was a part of that. And so our paths kind of crossed again. So I got to know Shane in those very first few months and really got to appreciate that. So best of luck Shane on your retirement and enjoyed working with you. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much.
Shane, when I got here, you'd been here six years already. And we started, and I was your peer at that time. I very much appreciated that you would share any knowledge and help me figure out the way to do it the way Thornton does it. I'm not going to say the Thornton way, but we had a way, right? Throughout your career, you worked on virtualization and data backups. And with all that in mind, your whole mindset was about resiliency and keeping things available for our users to use. And those are huge accomplishments in this world in IT. And to be at Thornton for 24 years in the IT world is huge. And most people don't last in a single job for 24 years. I commend you for that. And I wish you very much a good retirement, and I wish you very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Appreciate it, bud.
So we do have this plaque to present to you as a thank you. It's not enough after 24 years. I know how hard IT individuals work because we are not easy to work with. So, thank you. I'm going to ask the council to come up and join us for a picture.
Just a hair closer. Okay. Ready? One more. Thank you.
It's always great to see the longevity of our employees and how much value they bring to us across the city. So, thank you again, Shane. Item seven B is a resolution of the city council of the city of Thornton, Colorado, supporting home rule municipalities in litigation against the state and asserting home rule authority over local land use and zoning. Mayor Potembigala, would you please introduce this item and read it in its entirety?
Yep. Just one second. I'm just trying to pull it up. Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties. Does anybody else want to read this for me?
Councilmember Sandgren?
Thank you. Introduce a resolution of the city council of the city of Thornton, Colorado, supporting home rule municipalities in litigation against the state and asserting home rule authority over local land use and zoning, and I move for its approval.
Would you read it in its entirety?
Whereas by a special election held on July 18, 1967, the residents of the city of Thornton voted to become a home rule municipality and approved their governing charter. And whereas the charter of the city of Thornton, Colorado, provides the city shall have all the power of local self-government and home rule and all power possible for a city to have under the constitution of the state of Colorado. And whereas, under the provisions in Colorado Constitution, Article XX, Section 6, zoning and land use planning have been designated as purely local and municipal matters to be locally controlled. And whereas, home rule municipalities and their local government partners bear the responsibility to evaluate the potential, the impacts of proposed land uses on their communities, including the ability to ensure adequate water supply and utility services, provide for public safety, schools, and recreational facilities, maintain sufficient and safe transportation, pedestrian, and other infrastructure to support increased population or intensified land use aligned development with the community's goals, preserve historic and cultural resources, and protect open space and the environment. And whereas, the Thornton City Council strongly believes these responsibilities are best met by listening to the voices of the residents of the city most impacted by its decisions. And whereas, the state enacted House Bill HB 24-1304, minimum parking requirements, and House Bill 24-1313, housing and transit oriented communities that purport to place statewide mandates governing aspects of land use and zoning legislation on a limited group of home rule municipalities. And whereas, on May 16, 2025, Governor Polis issued Executive Order D 2025005, declaring that municipalities failing to comply with the above referenced bills and other land use legislation from previous sessions will be deprioritized for competitive or discretionary funding opportunities, including grants and incentive programs, contracts, loans, and tax credits. And whereas, six home rule municipalities fly out a lawsuit against the state of Colorado, Governor Polis, the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, and its executive director, seeking a declaration that HB 24-1313 and HB 24-1304 violate the Colorado Constitution and seeking injunctions against enforcement of the bills and Executive Order D 25005. And whereas, city council desires to express the support for the plaintiff municipalities and the goals of the lawsuit. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Thornton, Colorado, follows. The city of Thornton affirms its longstanding support of the powers granted by the constitution of the state of Colorado, which includes home rule authority over zoning and land use planning. The city of Thornton supports the plaintiff home rule municipalities and their litigation efforts against the state seeking injunctions against the enforcement of certain housing bills from the 2024 legislative session, HB 24-1304, minimum parking requirements, and HB 24-1313, housing and transit oriented communities, and Executive Order D 25005, and declarations that the same are in violation of the constitution of the state of Colorado, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and it's seconded to approve the resolution, and I'll open it for discussion. Councilmember Sandgren, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
Thank you. I think we've seen over the last several years many different attempts to take away home rule authority. We know what's best in our city. Taking away parking, taking away other land use requirements and putting that in the state hands is not in the best interest of our community or our residents. We were given that authority many, many years ago. And as we all know, removing parking requirements from our city just creates more parking problems and more problems along the roadway. So, very happy to support this, very strong believer in home rule, and hopefully they will get this resolved quickly. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? I'll add my comments as well. I think this is something that we would really like to work with the state legislative branch on being partners instead of having preemption. And I know we have one in the audience this evening, and we would hope to be able to work with her in the future for things that could help our community and get to the same end result without taking away our powers of local control. And I would actually ask if I could get a copy of this that is approved tomorrow to be able to send to the Metro Mayor's Caucus. And I would hope we would send a copy as well to the governor, as well as to the leadership at the state legislature. Please pull the council.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandgren?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Potembigala?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item eight is public hearings, and there are no public hearings this evening. So we'll move on to item nine, which is audience participation. This is a time for members of the community to speak on any item that is not on the agenda as a public hearing or going to be on a public hearing in the future. Pursuant to the city council's rules of order and procedure, speaking time is limited to three minutes per person with a one hour limit on this segment of the agenda. In-person speakers will be heard first, followed by remote speakers registered before the end of the in-person comment segment. Residents of the city, as indicated on the sign up sheet, will be given preference in the order heard in each segment. Ms. Rosamam, is there anyone signed up to speak under audience participation?
Yes, Your Honor. We have four in person and one online.
All right. Thank you. Once again, in just a moment, each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. And this segment of the agenda is limited to one hour. Please make sure that you watch the light on the podium. When it turns yellow and you hear a single beep, you'll need to wrap up your comments. And when it turns red and you hear multiple beeps, your time is up, and I'll have to interrupt you as your three minutes are over. When you are called, those in person, please come to the podium. And then those who indicated on the webinar registration that you wish to speak will be allowed to unmute and speak when the clerk calls your name. Ms. Rosamam, who was the first person signed up?
Danny Thornton.
Mr. Namazi?
You're goddamn right. How's it going, folks? Today I want to talk about something a little different, think a little more globally. Some of you might know I am Iranian. And if you know Iranian, you might know that one thing we most certainly dislike more than the pathetic losers that control the American government is the pathetic losers that control the Iranian government. So I was super hyped when President Trump decided to bomb Iran. Frankly, I'm surprised no one has thought of using violence in the Middle East as a solution. Well, now with our violence-first approach, I'm sure we're going to reach peace and prosperity any day now. And if we don't, that's okay, too. Think of all we'd have to gain. We gained so much from Afghanistan and Iraq and Yemen. Think of how much the economy will be stimulated when American bomb manufacturers make record profits. Think about all those cute boxes we'll bring home with the American flags draped over them. We brought back so many in Iraq. We brought back so many in Afghanistan and Yemen. And I know Iran, if anything I know about that country is they're competitive. They won't let themselves be outdone by Afghanistan and Iraq, and they will send us so many of those cute boxes with the American flags draped over them. But I shouldn't joke about our dead service members. In fact, that's probably some of the stuff Jan Coleman is talking about when she talks about the hate and division I put here. Sometimes I have a hard time finding the line. It's somewhere between sending our children to die overseas and making jokes about it. And kind of fucking blind in that department. But she has a point. There is a person promoting hate and division in our community. There is an entity who is over and over hurting people with his words and his actions over and over here in the year of our Lord, 2025. Someone who has caused so much division, someone we all know, someone that, like Jan Coleman said, we should come together and say we cannot allow this sort of hate and division to take over our politics. The person I'm, of course, talking about, that we all obviously know, is Danny Coleman. He spreads so much hate and division, and we need to come out and together let the community know, those who divide us will not get our attention, will not get our support. In unrelated news, over this weekend, at a Fourth of July celebration, our president said of Democrats that did not vote for him that he, quote, "I hate them. I really do because they hate our country." And I guess we'll continue to wonder why lawmakers are being assassinated and where that hate and division comes from. Anyways, thanks so very much. I love coming up here and, you know, saying my piece.
Would you please call the next person?
Tom Molander, Word one.
Mayor, city council, what I have to talk about is I want the police chief and the fire chief to hear this. I was at the Fourth of July event on Friday. I was sitting, or I was standing, talking to Sergeant Cushing. And I had my granddaughter with me. Sorry. But she got a little dizzy. She sat down and she threw up. Just putting it out there what happened. Sergeant Cookie, Cushing, sorry, was quick enough. He got a hold of the fire rescue people. They got over there pretty quick, and they did their job wonderfully. They ambulanced her to the hospital. It was mainly dehydration and a few other things, but they took care of her in a great way. And I appreciate what Officer Cushing did and what the fire rescue team did. I didn't get their names. The only reason I know the sergeant is because I see him here a lot and I talk to him. But I wanted to make sure that the fire chief and the police chief knows. Man, if you can give, they all did a wonderful job. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say. And, oh, have a good day.
Is your granddaughter okay now? Tom? Tom, is your granddaughter okay now?
Oh, yeah. I thought I said that.
Thank you. For those online, he said his granddaughter is okay now. Would you please call the next person?
Tom Lampo, no address provided.
Hello, I'm Tom Lampo. Hope all are well. I'm still objecting to your land statement, and it's becoming very apparent that history doesn't agree with your ideology. History isn't going to change. Throughout history, we've all been slaves. We've all been slave owners. That's not going to change. Chris, you once stated sometimes history is difficult. Tonight is one of those times. In 1821, the American government purchased land from tribal leaders in Africa and Liberia was born. This is where over 13,000 mainly Southern state blacks decided to go for a better life. Now, you'd think that once enslaved people would be overjoyed to leave any thought of slavery behind them, a new life in front of them, a land close to where their ancestors would have come from. Freedom, Liberia actually means free place. Free for who is what we need to ask. In reality, freedom for one and freedom for all didn't manifest itself in the new land. It didn't take long before those fleeing the horrific practice of slavery started subjugating and enslaving the native African population. It wasn't discovered by the League of Nations until 1930. And even though there was a great deal of political upheaval, the exploitation went on for several decades longer. Liberia has never had a European colonial ruler, yet Liberia engaged in slavery as Western governments, which included the colonial government here in America, was ending the practice. Throughout history, the only group of people who attempted to eradicate slavery and was largely successful were the white people. Remember, it was the American Indian who held onto slaves the longest here in America, and they objected so fervently to setting blacks free, the government was forced to sign new treaties. The colonial government was ending slavery, and the American Indian and the Liberian were enslaving blacks. Currently, Africa has a white population of around 4.8%, while blacks make up over 80% of the population, and slavery still exists with over 700,000 enslaved individuals. To put that in context, less than 460,000 slaves came here to the USA during the slave trade. Today, slavery is practiced in, I'm sorry, slavery isn't practiced in any white countries. Slavery is not a color problem or a nationality problem. Slavery is a human problem resulting from the fall of man when sin entered into our lives. We've all been slaves. We've all been slave owners. Everyone, enjoy your night. Thank you.
Would you please call the next person?
Jeffrey Gonzalez, Thornton.
Good evening. I've been here like, this is going to be my fourth time here. I've complained about the traffic in my neighborhood. And thanks to Mr. White a little bit ago, who assured me that he would look into that and take care of it. I've asked the council, I've asked you to see if you couldn't take care of that traffic. Between 120th and 128th in Colorado, nothing has been done. Nothing. Nothing has been done in my neighborhood. These people drive through there like, oh, we don't care. We'll drive as fast as we want to because nobody's going to say nothing. I've asked for speed bumps in that neighborhood because of that reason. I have a park across the street where my grandkids play, and one of these days, somebody's seriously going to get hurt or killed. And when that happens, I'm going to blame you because you don't want to do nothing about it. And the reason I say this is because you don't live in my neighborhood. You don't hear the noise there every day, and it's annoying. It's past annoying. Fourth of July, fireworks till 2:00 in the morning. We have signs everywhere. Illegal. And I don't see anybody being stopped in my neighborhood for that reason. My neighbor was setting them off. These things are so loud. Unbelievable. And I really do think that I've been told, I've asked about, I've been told about my yard, about, okay, well, you have this. Well, you know what? I have the cleanest, and I know I do. I have the cleanest yard in my neighborhood, on my block, anyway. I know I do. I have neighbors who could care less what it looks like. Now, when it goes to sell my home, I don't think I'm going to be able to sell my home because of the way some of the places look in that neighborhood. Who wants to move to a neighborhood where? Who wants to move to a neighborhood where, well, gee, you know what? I can see what that house looks like. I can see what it looks like. Now I know what the people are like. Ridiculous. So I really do think that somebody, whoever it is, whoever you have enforcing that needs to go through my neighborhood, look at the yards in that neighborhood and make them clean them up. Because if you have ordinances, then maybe you should stick to them. Because I don't, I don't know what you're doing. I really, I really don't see anything happening there. But I honestly think that when somebody gets hurt at that park where those kids are playing and the people that drive up 123rd and Harrison the way they do, believe me, if one of those kids gets hurt, I'm gonna be one of the first ones out on that street. And I'm not a very happy, I'm not a very happy resident here in Thornton, I guarantee it. But thanks to Mr. White.
Thank you very much.
Maybe things will happen.
Can we please connect someone with him with code as well? Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Darlene Ogwun, no address provided.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm gonna go back to my little, my little neighborhood and my world here in Thornton. And I've mentioned this before. And I was, well, I'll just tell you, I, because I'm, there's one department in this city that is just stellar. And there are probably others, but it's been consistent. I've been a resident here for a very, very long time. And I used to watch the garbage or trash or what, politically correct, that very valuable person go and get my neighbor's trash from the back of her yard and would stop and visit with her and then take it back. And it just made her day. That's the kind of service I saw way, 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 way back then. And, and even now, when, when they go down the street, I filled my recycle bin. I could still close the lid flat, but I thought, oh, I should pull out the other one. It's pretty full. And he dropped two pieces of paper. And I couldn't get out there in time to tell him, it's okay, I'll get it. He stopped the truck and he went and cleaned that up. And, and I mean, it's just so consistent. It's consistent week after week, year after year, everything. It's just great. And the customer service, I had to call because my budget billing changed and I needed a little tech help. And my name's Darlene and I, I know her name because her name's Darlene. And I said, I've mentioned this at council before. Have you guys ever heard about this? Heard, oh, no, we haven't heard it. I hope that someone acknowledges that whole department. I mean, I was so impressed with the help that she did. You know, I, I was able to send some crumble cookies over there. That's all I could do because it's consistent and it's all of them and they're friendly. And I just want to say, that's a great department. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think that was the last person signed up to speak.
Yes, Your Honor.
Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak but didn't know you needed to sign up? I know you knew you needed to sign up.
Am I good to speak?
Go ahead.
Jackie Phillips, Colorado House of Representatives. Actually, wasn't gonna speak tonight because I just got in late last night from Africa and I'm super tired. But I'm just, I'm always happy to, the young people show up. And when I say young, I mean everybody because everyone's younger than me now. But, but I wanted to show up just as a support because I talked last time that we were here about, you know, trying to get young people more engaged and involved. And so we continue to do that by bringing them here to city council meetings. And at the last meeting, we even had, somebody even spoke. And so we continue to encourage them to do that. But while I'm here tonight, I do want to do a shout out for the Home Rule Resolution, Resolution? Was it a resolution or proclamation, whichever? Anyway, Home Rule, yes to that. So super happy that you did that. As a state legislator, I'm hugely supportive of that, especially as a former city council member. So just know that I'll continue to work with the city council and to work with the lobbyists and whoever else contacts me and approaches me, the city manager, police, fire, all of it. Seems like it's a really good, positive night tonight, except for the, that one problem about the traffic. I'm sure you'll take care of that. But yeah, it's a great night and a good time for Thornton City Council. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we can move on to item 10, which is council comments and communications. We're gonna start with Ward one tonight, Councilmember Martinez.
All right, thank you to all who came down and, and spoke to the council. And yes, we will certainly be looking into the traffic issues and doing everything we can to make the city safer and, and a healthier place for everybody. It's been a while since we have convened as a council and got, been able to give updates to the city. So there's a lot to go through. And I know many of my council colleagues have joined me on these. But I want to first start out by congratulating from, from up here, Billy Birch for opening their restaurant up in Ward three, down by 120th and Holly area. And I was lucky enough to attend the ribbon cutting and it really is a, a great place. And I know Ward three is a, is just so happy to have a new restaurant in the area. And we're trying to recruit more restaurants for our city and find more places for our residents to hang out and have a good time with their friends and family. So you know, on that note, Ward four, I was also able to attend the Chicken and Pickle Grand Opening, which was an amazing event. Really excited to have more pickleball options in the city of Thornton. In fact, I was just talking with my wife, that might be something that I might need to try out, pickleball. I've never played it before. But with Chicken and Pickle, I have no excuse not to. So if you haven't checked, if you haven't checked out Chicken and Pickle, I highly recommend it. It's got one of the best rooftop patios in the city. So it's over up there on by 144th and I-25. And that same day was really busy for all of us on council. Because later that evening, the city of Thornton hosted its second annual Juneteenth celebration. And I want to commend Tashco and the City Parks Department for hosting such an incredible event. We were recognizing and honoring the, the freedom of slavery in the United States. That's a very important day called Freedom Day. Celebrated all and I'm really happy that the city of Thornton is participating in that. And I can say that our celebration was, was excellent. We had a fantastic performance from the, from the band and we had some great poetry. And this was my first year attending Juneteenth. So because last year, we were all out on a, on a council trip. But this year, I was glad that I got to go and it did not disappoint. So thank you to all who hosted that. I look forward to celebrating again next year on June 19th. And on that note, Tashco has been on fire, giving us some fantastic events. That following Saturday, we had the Thornton Pride Event. Thornton Pride Event has continued to grow and become more successful. This family-friendly event had all different types of activities for all ages to celebrate our LGBTQ plus community and all that they bring to our city. And I'm proud that the city of Thornton continues to support all of our residents and welcome everybody into our city. That following week was busy for all of us on council. Many of us attended the annual Colorado Municipal League Conference up in Breckenridge. And there's just a few, you know, there were so many different sessions, so many different things to learn and gain from this convention of staff leadership, council leadership from cities all throughout Colorado. Some of the ones that really stuck out to me was a session on called Minding the Gap, Addressing Middle Housing for a Livable Tomorrow. And if many of you know me, I'm really big on, on finding ways to build that middle housing in the city of Thornton. And the meeting explored many different strategies. I would say also that Thornton adopted, has adopted or is looking at adopting many of these strategies for expanding housing options, including zoning reforms, regulatory changes, with a focus on creating more flexible housing types and simplifying the permitting process, which is something that I look at, looking very closely at in the near future. We had discussions centered around ADU development challenges and water availability. All of this stuff was, was very informative. And I'm proud to say that, you know, the city of Thornton is already in progress on a lot of these initiatives. We also had a legislative update from the CML staff, where we talked about several legislative changes affecting law enforcement, elections, reporting requirements, all sorts of things. An update from what happened in the last session and what we can expect from the next legislative session. So I really appreciate that Thornton is a member of CML and that we do have leadership in that organization because they do give us some strong guidance. And the last thing is at CML that I found very informative was a discussion on the future of funding for municipalities in Colorado. The meeting addressed federal and state budget challenges impacting municipalities with discussions on potential funding cuts and the need for local advocacy to protect essential programs. The change in the federal administration, cities throughout Colorado are gonna have to look at new and innovative ways to keep our programming and our services up to, up to par. And, and we need all the help that we can get. So being able to collaborate with our neighbors and to work with CML was very beneficial. So I'm grateful to have gone to that. And then when I got back from CML, I was able to attend the Ward two Rhythm and Reels event. If you haven't been able to make it out to a Rhythm and Reels event, I highly recommend it. It always has great music followed by a movie. So it's fun for the whole family. So if you can make it, please do. In fact, the next Rhythm and Reels event is coming up this Saturday in Ward one on the 12th at five o'clock through, running through 9:30 at Community Park. Now, I'm sorry, I don't recall the name of the band or the movie that we're watching, but I can promise you both are gonna be good. So you should come on out. I'll be there. I know many of the other council members will be there. If anything, it'll be a great chance to meet some of your neighbors and to have a good time with some good music. There was also the Fourth of July event. You know, I'll be brief on this because I know my colleagues will, will get to go into more details. But I will say that I think there was a huge improvement in the police and public safety presence at this event. I could tell, my family could tell. We all felt much safer and we also felt like that there was, you know, if there was an incident, like we heard from Mr. Molander, that the police and fire would be quick responders. And I'm glad that they were able to help you out and your family, Tom. And so thank you to all the public safety officials who made the Fourth of July a safe and, and really fun event. So I had a great time. So a couple more events that are coming up. The Ward four community meeting is this Thursday, July 10th from six to seven thirty at the Infrastructure Building, which is at 12450 Washington Street. Just like all of our community meetings, it's a chance to meet with staff, meet with council members and to know what's going on in, in the, with a focus on Ward four. On Friday, the 11th, Tashco is hosting an opening reception for artist Christian Ortiz, where we'll get to see Christian's latest art projects and displayed up at the Tashco Oz Gallery. And that's from six to eight o'clock. And as I said, the Ward one Rhythm and Reels event is this Saturday, the 12th, from five o'clock to nine thirty at Community Park. So I really look forward to seeing everybody come out there and meet everybody who wants to come and join us at any of these events. I plan on being on at all three of them. So if you plan on coming out there, stop on over and say hi. I'd love to meet you.
Councilmember Salazar.
First of all, I would like to thank Tom, Darlene and Jackie. I always appreciate you guys coming and speaking. And I was able to attend the Hook and Ladder graduation with North Metro Fire, South Adams County Fire and Thornton Fire. Support these 15 through 18 year old graduates was truly inspiring. It was, it was incredible to witness such young individuals dedicating themselves to this path and achieving so much already. Their commitment and hard work at such a pivotal age are genuinely commendable. I was also able to attend the Neighborhood Block Party. It was a fantastic opportunity to connect with many new constituents. It was great to hear directly from residents and strengthen our community ties. And it was a fantastic opportunity to connect with so many professionals at the Colorado Hispanic Chambers Business Networking Mixer. And I really enjoyed the chance to build new relationships and learn from others in the community. Also Friday night, if you haven't heard, the Active Elder Adult Center is gonna do their very first drive in. If you haven't signed up, go find it. It's gonna be an amazing event. Also Saturday night is our Rhythm and Reels. And I do know the movie is Monsters Inc., but I don't know the band. So I hope everyone can come out and join everyone and I look forward to meeting you.
Councilmember Ayala.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to take a moment to thank the staff of the Fire Department, the Police Department and our city staff for their hard work and dedication over the Fourth of July weekend. It's a super busy weekend and I couldn't help but think how a lot of us are enjoying the weekend and there are people working pretty hard. So really appreciate the work that goes into putting on our city event, from managing the fireworks show to keeping our community safe throughout the city. The professionalism and the commitment don't go unnoticed. So I just wanted to make sure that we thank you all for that. And it's just a service that's provided to make sure that everybody else can celebrate safely. So really appreciate our first responders on that evening and during that day. Additionally, I want to extend heartfelt condolences to the families impacted by the devastating floods in Texas. I think all of our thoughts are with folks during this difficult time. I know that our, our city has sent two of our firefighters to assist in the recovery efforts, which makes, you know, makes me feel proud of our city and our first responders to be able to help out with this recovery efforts. And I think it's just a, kind of a powerful reminder of the strength and compassion our first responders have. And I hope that we can take this tragedy as a moment to just kind of reflect and grow, to raise awareness around the increasing threat of natural disasters in our cities and our neighborhoods and just ensure that we have the strongest possible safety responses, emergency responses, plans in place to protect our own community as well. Being prepared will save lives and it's something we must always strive to improve and grow in our city. Next, I just wanted to kind of take a moment to talk a little bit about leadership. I've noticed that more and more leadership, leaders are describing themselves as pragmatic. And I've been kind of thinking about what that actually means. And what I've kind of come to the conclusion is, is like, it seems like pragmatic leadership often focuses on maintaining a status quo, on compromise, on avoiding conflict and choosing what's realistic in the short term. And while this stability has its place in, in government sometimes, this kind of leadership can sometimes lack the urgency and vision our community needs and is in desperate need of, especially when people are struggling and we need to take bold action to make change, it's long overdue. Another kind of leadership, one that I think that kind of aligns with the pragmatic leadership, but it's also just really aligned with special interests. And those leaders whose decisions reflect mainly on the needs of corporations and businesses and not the people that elected them and who they were elected to serve, their vision is shaped by the powerful donors, the lobbyists, and not by what working families in our neighborhoods are actually asking for. And when I think about leadership, that's not necessarily the kind of leader I want to be. I think our city and our people deserve leaders who will fight for real change, even when it's hard. Leaders who will listen deeply to our community's voices, not just during campaign season, but every day. Leaders who challenge the systems that aren't working and who bring urgency, courage and integrity to the table. We don't need caretakers of broken systems. We need builders of a just future. And that's the kind of leader I would like to be. And so we're kind of like at a turning point, I think, right now, not just locally, but nationally. We're facing huge budget cuts and decisions that could further harm our already struggling systems. And in moments like this, I think we need to take a look at the pragmatism and notice that it's not gonna serve us alone, but we need to be looking at new solutions and new visions for our future. So this week, I'm attending the Local Progress Convention. And my, my hope is to bring back ideas and policies that will offer bold solutions, solutions and justice, not just what's politically convenient, but things that will, ideas and things that will be not as traditional, but maybe things that reflect the values of our working people in our city, the hopes of our people who live here and work here. And so I'm asking just kind of broader here on city council as we kind of finish up the year, that we take a broader look into our community and support leadership and, and kind of have discussions that are gonna be not grounded in special interests, but looking more at what our community wants and building a future that lifts everybody up, not just a well-connected few folks. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Sangren.
Thank you. I also wanted to start by taking a moment to acknowledge the devastating situation in Texas, where this ongoing disaster has taken more than 108 lives as that number continues to grow. And so as Councilmember Ayala mentioned, we do have firefighters there. And so just want to give want to give a big shout out to them. No matter where the call comes from, they're always quick to respond and never hesitate to go where needed. So thank you to them. Fourth of July was a great event, as always. It's one of our largest events in the city. I think it is actually the largest event, and it's amazing to me how the staff puts that event together year after year. So I just want to thank the city staff, the first responders, the vendors, the entertainment that we had. I'm always excited to see the fireworks show and the parachute jumpers, and luckily, we didn't have any weather this year, and so both of those things were able to happen. Another thing that happened on Fourth of July, the Northland Thornton Rotary Club has its annual duck derby. That's one of their largest fundraising events in the year. That's over at E.B. Raines Park in Northland, but it does benefit both Northland and Thornton communities through the Ford Food Banks that we support, that they support. I'm a part of that club. I've been a part of the Rotary Club for the last eight years. They also support CASA, scholarships to all four school district foundations, and other city-driven initiatives. So thank you to the community that supported that event. Winners are being announced as we speak. I also want to give a shout out to Justin Curry and the Fire Department TICO students. They've been volunteering their time for the last several years to that event, and they have really become a staple in that event. The Rotary Club cannot thank them enough. They are very strong and energetic young kids. And so thank you to those that continue to come out each year and support the Rotary Club. Always great to hear the new business openings, especially anything pickleball-related. As you know, I love pickleball, so happy to take you on anytime, Justin, if you do decide to take that out for a try.
Don't do it, Justin.
At the CML Conference, we did have a tour with the Home Builders Association. Some of us were able to attend the Panorama House Tour. It was sponsored by James Hardy Siding. That was actually a really interesting, I didn't know what it was. I thought it was like some sort of a memory care, but it was actually just a very big house in Breckenridge. And so James Hardy Siding was showing off their siding, which is non-combustible, hail-resistant, termite-resistant, fiber cement siding, and recognizes one of several tactics that can help protect Colorado homes from damaging fires and storms. And so I know a lot of that has been just sort of a topic of discussion for different development, and so it's nice to see that as part of the CML Tour. And as I've been doing the last few weeks, I am going to thank a few of our city departments. As I mentioned, this is my last term, and so just want to make sure that I share with the city departments just my gratitude for their work over the years. So I start with Human Resources tonight, so just want to thank the entire Human Resources Department for your consistent, high-level work, your leadership in recruiting key staff, managing labor negotiations, and ensuring departments are equipped with the resources they need has been essential to keeping the city operations running smoothly. So I also want to acknowledge your efforts in organizing meaningful community engagement during key hiring processes, including the city manager and police chief. Involving residents in those decisions helps build trust and transparency, and I think it was a good experience for all of those hires. Whether it's implementing policy, navigating workforce needs, or supporting employee development, your work strengthens the entire city, and so I just want to say thank you for your professionalism and dedication. The next department is Communications, and so thank you to the Communications Department for your outstanding work. Your ability to take complex city initiatives and turn them into clear, engaging messages is a tremendous asset to our city. From the fun, informative My Thornton videos to the creative use of drone footage and strong collaboration with other departments, you've helped residents connect with the work happening across the city. Your team also plays a critical role behind the scenes, providing timely talking points on new development, supporting us when stories hit the news, and assisting with media inquiries. I'm also very appreciative that you're always looking for new ways to communicate with the community, especially as technology evolves and new opportunities emerge, whether through video, social media, public outreach. You help make sure Thornton's story is told clearly, accurately, and with pride. So thank you to the entire communications team. And lastly, for tonight, I'm going to recognize the IT Department. We heard a little bit about the longevity from the IT Department and some of the things that that individual has done over his 24 years. IT Department is often the unsung heroes behind the scenes, keeping our city running smoothly and securely, from protecting our systems against cyber attacks to responding when we get locked out or hit a glitch, making sure we have access to the tools and data we need to serve the public. They're always quick to respond, no matter how big or small the issue, and that reliability makes a real difference in how we're able to serve the community. What stands out just as much as their technical expertise is their professionalism. Whether it's calmly troubleshooting under pressure, explaining complex systems in ways we can actually understand, or handling sensitive issues with care, their approach to every challenge is with patience, clarity, and respect. So thank you for all your help over the years. And then finally, I have every week protested the land acknowledgement. I don't believe that we have the data that we need to have a land acknowledgement, especially with the last paragraph on enslaved Africans. I still have not been able to find anyone that can share that information on which exact tribes or any enslaved Africans that were ever in Colorado. I usually read something, a national holiday of some kind, but I actually found this week an op-ed on the Fourth of July from a retired SEAL, and it was, I'm just going to read what he wrote, because I think it's very fitting for the time and for my reasons for protesting the land acknowledgement. So this is his story. This is a story about America, our country. "I went to the opening day of a soccer game in my hometown of San Diego. It was the first game in the history of our club, the San Diego Football Club, and there was a lot of hype. It was a completely sold-out game. It was being reported by local news and all over social media. It was a big deal. The people of San Diego were excited to our new professional soccer team. They had a lot of ceremonial-type activities before the game. Local politicians were there. There was ribbon cutting, various dedications, and all the pomp and circumstances of a momentous occasion. When the players took the field, the crowd was fully engaged, and just before the game, it was time for the great American tradition before a sporting event, the singing of the National Anthem." I'm going to skip to the end of this. He thought that maybe they would select a local celebrity for the task, because there are plenty of talented musicians in San Diego that would do that powerful song justice. What ended up happening was the announcer invited the crowd to stand for the singing of the National Anthem. He rose to his feet along with 35,000 other people, and then the announcer explained that the anthem would be sung and performed by the crowd. It would be a sing-along. He was shocked and disappointed and somewhat beside himself. What were they thinking? So 35,000 people were able to, were they going to be able to pull this off? He said, "I knew the people would be able to sing too loud, too quiet. They would sing too high, too low. Some people wouldn't even sing at all, and many would sing are completely tone-deaf." Once they started, after a few bars, the voices started blend together. The low were balanced out by the high, the quiet bolstered by the loud, and out-of-tune were leveled out by people singing perfectly on pitch. At the end of this story, the group of 35,000 individuals singing together was as good as he had ever heard, and it wasn't perfect, but imperfections gave it the soul and it made the song human. And just like this great country, we have many voices. Some people quiet, some people loud, some people rich, some people poor. We are all different, but we are all Americans.
Councilmember Unrain?
Evening. Thank you. It's been three weeks since our last council meeting, and I just have a couple of comments on the most recent events. July 3rd, we received an email from our city attorney updating us on the latest legal decision regarding the Thornton Water Project. The Laramie County Court upheld the Laramie County's approval, allowing the Thornton Water Project to continue the pipeline constructions as detailed in the 1041 permit. Thank you to the city attorney's office and everyone that is working very hard to ensure Thornton's water for the future. The Fourth of July activities at Carpenter Park were, once again, absolutely incredible. It looks to be another record-breaking attendance crowd for this 2025 year. Thank you Parks Department, Fire, Police, and EMS professionals, staff members, and all city employees, and citizen volunteers for making this a safe, enjoyable, and patriotic event. Thank you. And yesterday, the Thornton Area 55+ Organization in partnership with the Quilts of Valor Foundation presented handmade quilts to 15 U.S. military veterans in appreciation and honoring them for their service to our country. The Daughters of American Revolution gave additional recognition to the Vietnam veterans that were present. Meeting and hearing these veterans share their experience gives me great patriotic pride and the opportunity to personally thank each one of them. This was the third presentation ceremony the 55+ Organization arranged this year, and they are accepting applications for the next recognition presentation. Contact any of the 55+ board members or myself for an application. My sincere thanks to everyone bringing this appreciation and recognition ceremony to Thornton. Another event that's going on in the future in August, August 5th is National Night Out. The National Night Out is an event that I've celebrated for many, many years in Thornton, and we continue to do that in our neighborhood. But I'm mentioning that right now because you need to fill an application out, submit it to the Police Department, have it approved, and they'll get back to you. It's kind of a lengthy process. So go online, get an application, or contact me. We'll get an application out to you so that we can get you on the list for the National Night Out. As I said, this is a national event, but it goes on in every city throughout the country, and it's a fantastic way for neighbors to get together and share one another's food or fun, or however you want to do it. But it's a great way to spend an August night. And finally, I'd like to extend my thoughts and prayers and ask you to do the same for my ward partner, David Acunto. He's not with us tonight because he had a family emergency, and he needed to take care of family business. So thank you for understanding why David's not with us tonight, and that's all I have.
Councilmember Russell?
Thank you, ma'am. It's been a busy few weeks in our community. As mentioned, it's been three weeks since we've had an opportunity to come before you, and many of the items that I will touch base on have been discussed already, so I will be a little bit brief to help expedite things. But in that, I had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting for Hydroequipped, a new business here in Thornton in Ward Four, and I want to congratulate them on their expansion and investment in our city. It's exciting to see the continued economic growth and new jobs continuing to come to our area. I also had a chance to check out the Billy Birch Beer Garden and Chicken and Pickle locations. Both are fantastic additions to our local entertainment and dining scene. These kinds of venues help bring people together and make our city more vibrant. In celebration of Juneteenth, also the same evening as the Chicken and Pickle ribbon cutting, I joined the community members to honor this important day in our nation's history. It was moving to see the strong turnout and meaningful programming, recognizing freedom, resilience, and progress. So thank you to Tashco for a very wonderful event. It's gotten very positive reviews from community members in which I've spoken to. I also attended the CML Conference in Breckenridge, which offered valuable insights and connections with other municipal leaders across the state. We were able to bring back some great ideas and best practices that we can consider here at home. Lastly, I participated in the Rocky Mountain Partnership Community Leadership Council meeting, where we had a powerful discussion about our civic influencers and the vital work that they're doing to trust and build engagement within our local communities. Our State Representative Phillips, who's here in the audience, I commend you on continuing to push forward, getting youth involved. It's something, as part of this job that I've taken on, that I really enjoy, and it's pretty important to continue to help build our future leaders within our community and give them the guidance that they need so that they can grow up to be great people. So thank you for what you're doing, and I'll continue to do that, a little bit of work on my end as well. And it's encouraging just to see this grassroots leadership making a difference and helping to strengthen the civic participation across our region. So thank you.
Mayor Potem Begalo?
Thank you. I do want to thank staff, Fire, and Police for helping with all of the events in the last few weeks. We've had so many. I'm not going to rehash everything everyone else has said, but I do want to remind the community that this Thursday night at 6:00 p.m., we have a community meeting for the entire city hosted by Ward Four at the Infrastructure Maintenance Center, and I invite everybody to be there. Thank you very much.
All right. Just a few updates from me as well. The city is currently accepting applications for the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments, and the deadline to apply is July 18th at 5:00 p.m. And like a few of my colleagues, I do want to acknowledge the victims of the floods in Texas. It wasn't that many years ago that Colorado had flooding that was devastating to our nearby communities, and it's not something that's easy for any of us to see. I've been on the Mile High Flood District Board now for six years, and this group works to help prevent situations like this. And while Texas has different issues related to flooding, and Colorado has different issues related to water flow, the experts are constantly helping each other and learning from these kind of events to keep them from repeating. It has been a busy and rewarding few weeks, and I'd like to share some of the highlights from those events. It does feel like forever ago, but just after our last formal meeting, several of us traveled to Washington, D.C., where we had the opportunity to meet with our elected officials and representatives from key federal agencies. These meetings were focused on ensuring that our community is included in national discussions, especially around infrastructure, economic development, and other federal priorities that impact us locally. It was a productive trip, and I am very optimistic about the relationships that we're building to support our city's future. I also attended the Colorado Municipal League Conference, which brought together leaders from across our state. I took part in sessions covering land use, energy, homelessness, and a range of other critical topics affecting our region. And it was an excellent opportunity to exchange ideas, learn from other municipalities, and bring some valuable insights back to our community. A little closer to home, it has been great to see so many of you at our community events. Our ice cream socials paired with our rhythms and reels concerts and movie series have been a great way to connect and enjoy the summer together. And the band this Saturday is Groove in Motion. They are performing music from the '70s all the way through today, and they are amazing. I'm looking forward to it. That starts at 5:00, and the movie starts around 7:00. And of course, our Fourth of July celebration was truly the best one yet. I want to give a big thank you to all the staff, volunteers, and community members who made it possible. Personally, it was extra special this year because I had the chance to perform with the Thornton Community Band on the clarinet, something I've been wanting to do for years since I've been coming to the Fourth of July, and I was so excited to be a part of it and celebrate in that way. As always, I'm proud of the work that we're doing together and grateful for the opportunity to continue serving our community. And thank you to everyone who joined us for public comment this evening, and especially those that took the time to dialogue with us respectfully tonight. With that, I will move on to staff reports. Item 11, 11A, is the Commercial Projects Quarterly Update. I'll turn this over to Adam Kruger, Economic Development Director, to present this item.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, and Council. Appreciate your time tonight. I am certainly happy to be here to talk about the commercial development update for the second quarter. You might remember when I was here for the first quarter, I talked about a lot of projects that would be coming up and opening, and a lot of those have. So we've got a lot to run through, so I'll go pretty quickly here through this. Maybe quickly. There we go. On the retail side, GQ BBQ opened May 14th. I think most of you know that, given that the lines have always been kind of out the door for that place, which is great. Billy Birch, as was alluded to by Councilman Martinez, opened at 120th and Holly on June 17th. Chicken and Pickle opened at The Grove on June 19th. And then Flood City Adventure Park, which is in part of what will be Gordon Foods facility, was the former Kmart off 104th, should have opened the last week of June. So that's indoor trampolines and foam pits and climbing walls, so it'll be pretty cool fun for the kids and adults. I've been to all those restaurants up top, and they've all been staying pretty busy. And I would say appreciate council and residents going to those. The busier those places are, the easier it is for us to market how well the restaurants are doing and bring in new restaurants to the city, which I know everybody wants. So thank you all for continuing to go to those. Under construction, Dick's House of Sport. If you don't know what that is, that is a 90,000-square-foot interactive sporting goods store. So you can test out, you can hit into batting cages, you can test out golf clubs, they got turf fields, a running track, climbing wall, so you can try your stuff out before you buy, which is really cool. That will be building in Lark Ridge and set to open late 2026. Malibu Jacks, as I've talked about before, is an indoor amusement park. So it's kind of like if Dave and Buster's at a carnival had a baby, it would be Malibu Jacks. They are planning on opening in September, I think mid-September of this year. It's going to be really cool at Thornton Town Center. Gordon Foods is a grocery store, a bulk grocery store, and they are getting really close to opening, but they are not going to actually open until November of this year. They delayed their opening a little bit, unfortunately, but they will be opening later this year. And then the CVS Pharmacy we've got in the summer of this year. If you've been out there at 136 in Quebec, you can tell it's pretty close to opening. Some more stuff that's coming soon that people might have heard about. Portillo's, Chicago-style street food. Everybody's pretty excited about that, 136 in Grant. They're planning on being open probably late 2026 up at the Outlet Mall. K1 Speed, looking like late 2026 for them. That is indoor go-karts. Candlelight Theater purchased their site this year. They are finished up their construction in Fort Collins, and then will build this. They're planning on being open 2027. That's also in Lark Ridge. Chick-fil-A will be coming to 136 in Quebec. We don't know exactly the timing on that one. Kentrow Commercial, same thing on the timing, but they're a big retail developer at 144th in Quebec. And... in Quebec. And then Dunkin' Donuts on 14th and Fox Run. We don't know when they'll be breaking ground yet, but they are all deals that are signed, and so we know they'll be coming soon. All right. On the employment side. There we go. So I'm not going to run through all of these individually, but BHD Test and Measurement, Corden Pharma, and TTI all opened here recently. And two of those are corporate offices, which is great. We've also got, Councilmember Russell mentioned Hydraquip, which is really excited that they're open now. We've also got Izio, which will be opening soon, so that's the production of bread. Ferguson, which will be opening, they're starting operations here in the next few weeks, and they'll be fully open later in the year. And then Target Cool Storage, which will be open likely late this year or early next. All of these projects account for over 700 new primary jobs in the city, which is outstanding. On the redevelopment side, I did give a pretty decent Thornton Shopping Center overview about four weeks ago, so I'm not going to run through all of that again, but I do want to say a couple of things. One, the real estate challenge is a really exciting project. If anybody's interested in seeing what they came up with, the students, their reports are on the website, Thornton Shopping Center website. You will likely start to see some contaminated soil removal here in the third quarter of this year, so when you start to see activity on that site, that is what you will be seeing. As I mentioned in our last update, we did, we hired a consultant to help us. We really want to put our best foot forward on getting the RFP and the solicitation put together on this, and so we've got a consultant to help us do that, as well as do some additional due diligence on the site. I'll mention, because I'll likely get asked, I know people are curious, we are still working with the post office in the same area code that they were in before. Unfortunately, no major updates on that, but we are still working with those folks. And then we have a multi-departmental, multi-year redevelopment plan that we've taken to council and talked about before. A lot of the infrastructure work that's a part of that will be Washington Street, but there's other components on 84th, other areas for beautification, and we'll continue to update council and residents on that as it moves forward. On the Alliance Business Assistance Center side, 635 total business interactions this last quarter, which is right on par with kind of where we generally are. What is much higher are our workshops. We had 131 attendees. That picture you see to the right there is from a food safety course that we did in Spanish, and we had 30-something folks go through that, which was amazing. We also did six ribbon cuttings, a number of those were alluded to, and two networking events, and we had 768 attendees at those, which is really a great turnout. And one thing I wanted to mention that might get somewhat overlooked, our alliance team is a small but mighty team. A lot of the things that we do are in the evening to accommodate businesses and business schedules, and so 69 evening hours by staff and counselors in the second quarter alone, which we thought was just something that was important to highlight. And two other really cool things that you might not know about, we've taken advantage of some grant opportunities at the Alliance Center to get some additional assistance. One of those is we brought in, through a program at Adams County Workforce Center, we brought in an administrative assistant intern named Cressy, and she is a paid intern, but she is paid by the Adams County Workforce Center and will be with us through likely close to the end of the year, which is really exciting there, doing some admin work because we are very busy at the center, per the numbers above. And then we also were fortunate to be able to bring in Hector Parra, who is fluent in English and Spanish, and he is a volunteer business counselor through Chase Banks Coaching for Impact Program, which is a community engagement program that they have that provides free business resources. He's done things for SCORE and other groups as well, and so really excited to have him onboard because our counseling sessions have been booking up, and people have been getting pushed farther out. So having Hector onboard has really been great. All right. Also want to touch on some of the business ribbon cuttings we've had, a number of those have been mentioned. GQ BBQ, Hydraquip on the 18th of June, Billy Birch also on the 18th of June, and Chicken and Pickle on June 19th. So that was a fun couple of days. Thanks to council, I know you guys are very busy, and a lot of these come on pretty quickly and somewhat last minute. Apologize for that, but they are really special days for the businesses, and so we want to support them and appreciate council when you guys come out. You guys do a great job of showing up for those things. I also want to thank the Thornton Chamber for their logistic work and support in putting those together. And last, a couple of business events I want to mention. We have a Business Networking Mixer, June 26th. We had one on June 26th that was alluded to earlier. If you haven't been to La Hicas, Mexican restaurant, here on Plaza, you should absolutely go there. Food is delicious, and the picture down there, you can see how beautiful it is inside. We did that event with the Colorado Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and we had over 130 attendees, which was great. We also have our Business Awards and Appreciation Party coming up on August 21st at Chicken and Pickle, so look forward to seeing businesses and council with that. Ran through a lot in a short amount of time. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Unrain?
Adam, one that's kind of hit the radar faster than what we can, you've come up with, 136th, 128th in Quebec, next to the Sonic Burger. We've got a frame building that's coming up right now. Can you tell us what business this is going to be?
128th in Quebec.
That's for the Sonic in front of the, just the daycare that's about to open.
Yeah. Blank on what that is, but I will follow up with you on who that is.
Yeah, a lot of questions coming up on that. Just get that information to me. Appreciate it.
Yep, will do.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, thank you, Adam, for the presentation. Going back to the post office, I know that you don't have any new updates, but could you give a brief summary of the, just to reiterate some of the updates that we've already had? I've been getting many questions lately about the post office, and I think it would be good to announce that tonight, and also just kind of a refresher as to where we stand and what the next steps are with the post office.
Sure. So they've, we've worked with the post office for a number of years on different locations in the city. They have committed that they'd like to be in the same zip code that they've been previously in, and so we have found them locations there. They did find a location that they liked. I believe it was earlier this year that they brought out a number of folks, probably eight people from their corporate team, and we toured it with them, as well as the owners of this center. Unfortunately, it's a slower-moving process than I think everybody would like on the decision-making side, but we are, they continue to show interest, and we are hopeful that we can get a deal done in that location. Next steps are continuing to work with them on finalizing this. They've been focused on this site for a while, so we're hoping we can get a deal done. I know they've been talking to the property owners fairly recently, so we're hoping that that continues to move forward and continue to facilitate that. We've expressed to them the interest from the residents, and they were not surprised. And that's why they want to continue to be in that same area, just working on trying to get a deal done.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. And when we do have some information, all I would ask is that we just quickly communicate anything that we, any news that we have. Many people are just very anxious about where this is going to be, when that's going to happen. I don't have any answers for them yet, except for just reiterating what you just said. My next ask is, you know, I really appreciate the economic development teams, all of their efforts, and one of the things that I found very helpful as a council member is getting to know some of our primary employers. I know in the past that we've had several tours of facilities and places, and I think it would be very beneficial to members of council to get, to further some of those tours with our, with our big partners. And if there's interest with some of our primary employers, we should just let them know that there's some council members that would love to, you know, come on down and show our support and let them know, you know, we're thankful that they're here in the city of Thornton, and that we want them to flourish, and that we'd love to see what they're bringing to the table, and so we can brag about it to our constituents and to all of our, everybody in our network.
Appreciate that, and I think that is an area that we have been trying to focus on, doing more of those tours. I think we have another couple coming up. And if there are ever businesses that council would like to get into, let us know, and we can certainly work with those business owners to try to facilitate that. Employers love showing off their space. Sometimes it does take time to get, just from a schedule standpoint, to get things set up, but we absolutely are. I appreciate those comments, and we'll definitely move towards doing more of those.
Councilmember Ayala?
I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation, and I know that, I feel like sometimes when I look at social media, it goes unnoticed what you all do as far as bringing restaurants here and new places to hang out, but I think the last few weeks have shown that we've made a lot of drastic improvements in that area, so just wanted to encourage you all and say good work. Thanks.
Any other questions from council? Thank you very much. Incredible work, as always. All right, we'll move on to item 12, which is the Consent Calendar. Is there any member of council who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve the consent calendar, as read.
Second?
Thank you. Approval of the consent calendar as presented has been moved and seconded. Clerk, please read the appropriate title into the record and poll the council.
In northern's vacating a portion of Eastlake Avenue and Claude Court rights of way located east of Lafayette Street and west of Claude Court. Mayor Coleman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Sangrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Begalo?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item 13 is action items. Item 13A through C are, includes a resolution adopting the City of Thornton, Colorado Post Employment Health Plan and approving the Trust Plan document and Administrative Services Agreement with Nationwide Retirement Solutions, Inc. for record-keeping and other administrative services for the City of Thornton, Colorado Post-Employment Health Plan, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the city and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 2376, concerning the Post-Employment Health Plan, and a resolution approving the Second Amendment to the Administrative Services Agreement for the 457B Deferred Compensation Plans and 401A Defined Contribution Plans of the City with Nationwide Retirement Solutions. Now I'm going to turn this over to Joyce Hunt, Deputy City Manager, to present these items.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council, Mayor Potem, and council members. I'm going to see if I can work this correctly. Yes. As the mayor introduced this, the purpose of this presentation is really to cover the next three items on your action agenda, and I will review those action items. And essentially, what it's, what we are doing is establishing a new post-employment health plan for city employees, and we're entering into an agreement that's related to that with the administrator of the post-employment health plan, and that benefits those people in the PEP plan, and also will benefit the city's deferred compensation and pension The back, there's a lot of words on here. Essentially, what I was trying to tell you is that the city established, we have basically two retirement health saving plans. One was created for our general employees back in 2003. Essentially, an RHS plan allows employees, and it's actually an employer contribution to, that allows the employee to earn revenue and income off of the deposits and investments in the RHS plan, and then be able to withdraw those funds to pay for medical costs and health-related costs in the future. And so they're really a very important plan to have for all of our employees. The first one that was created and established in the city of Thornton was in 2003, and at that time, the IRS allowed, allowed people who were retiring at age 50 to withdraw funds. Well, that law changed in 2014, and so that's why we have, changed in 2013, and that's why we have created a new plan, January 1st, 2014. The 2003 plan, we now refer to as the pre-2019, excuse me, 119-2014 plan, or also the old plan. And the plan that is currently in effect, which is, was created in January 1st, 2014, has different, a different provision in there, which basically allows you to withdraw funds to reimburse yourself after retirement only, or if you separate from service. So they have different rules. One of the things that you should know is that the city does contribute $350 per employee per year, along with what we call the cash value of vacation and holiday floating holiday time that is forfeited by the employee. And when I say forfeited, essentially, the city allows you to carry only a certain number of vacation hours, and if you have more than that number of hours at the end of the year, the way the, our administrative plan works is that the city, you are allowed to forfeit that amount over and above that, essentially, you don't, you have no way to use, and so you can forfeit it into this plan, and the city makes a cash contribution into the plan. And so that's a very valuable opportunity for employees that is actually paid for by the employer. In 2006, the fire union established what was a new type of plan at the time, a post-employment health plan, and that has slightly different rules under the IRS than the RHS plan, but they've had that plan in place since 2006, and it's a provision within their CBA or their collective bargaining agreement. All of these plans do not allow employee contributions. The contributions are made by the employer, but the employee benefits from the plan. One of the things that's really unique about RHS plans and PEP plans is they typically have very high administrative costs, and both of our, the fire union and our RHS plans have pretty high asset fees, and they're actually significantly larger than the deferred compensation and the 401 pension plans that we have contracts for. And that was a key point of, the Combined Pension Committee took this on because they were asked by some of the people that they represent to see if there was a way that the provider that we have for our, the account executive for our 401 plan, which is, excuse me, the pension plan and the deferred comp plan for all of our employees. If Nationwide had a solution and an alternative to create a PEP plan for all of, all of the city employees under one umbrella, and that was a pretty significant task because the rules were so different from our first original plan, the current plan we have in place, and then if, and then to deal with the unique regulations regarding the union, union employees. So we were very happy that after basically two years of working through this, Nationwide did come and propose a PEP plan, which allows us to accommodate all of those plans and basically save their provisions under one umbrella plan, and as well as with an administrative agreement that provides a very low rate of, as in the last bullet, it provides a very low rate asset fee for all of, all of our participants, whether they're in the fire union plan, the police plan, or whether they're in the old plan for the city employees or the current plan. And so we were very happy to see that. The reason we look to Nationwide is that, is because Nationwide has an administrative service agreement, I think as I previously mentioned, for our 457 and our 401A plan. And just, the timing was actually pretty good because their, their current agreement is about, will end at the end of this year, and so we actually went out to, requested quotes for, to see if we, what, whether or not we wanted to try to enter into an agreement with Nationwide to continue their contract, or to extend it, or to look for some other alternatives. And Nationwide did come back and propose a very excellent produced rate, and they were actually the successful, I don't want to call them a bidder, but they did respond, and they were, they were right in the middle of the pack. And probably more importantly is that they would, they agreed to extend that low rate not only just to our 401 and 457 plans, but also to this PEP plan, this post-employment health plan that would cover all of our city employees. And they also reduced a number of other fees, so it was, it was, it was very propitious that we, this all came together at the same time. So what you have tonight are three actions. The first one is to adopt a resolution that adopt- The first one is to adopt a resolution that adopts a post-employment health plan that covers the fire union, the police union, the city employees, and regardless whether they had the old plan or the new plan. And it, it approves a trust, a plan document, and an administrative services agreement that provides the overarching regulations and, and benefits for all of the four plans that I just mentioned. The second item that you have on the agenda, as I mentioned earlier, the fire union had created, established a PEP plan back in 2006, and their, the CBA, or the collective bargaining agreement, actually referred to the agreement that they have with Nationwide, which is a multi, multi-state employer arrangement. And so as a result of that, specific language being in their MO, in their CBA, we asked, and they have approved, a memorandum of understanding that recognizes the transition from the Nationwide, the Southern Trust Agreement that's overseen by Nationwide, to the City of Thornton Nationwide Trust Agreement. So that's the second item. And then the third one is, as I also stated earlier, we are recommending approval of a Second Amendment to the Administrative Services Agreement of Nationwide to extend their contract, and that, by virtue of that, they have lowered their, their asset fee as well as a number of other fees to reduce participant fees. So we had two goals in mind. One is to get kind of the best financial deal that we could, and the second one was to keep everybody whole with respect to how they could use their RHS funds moving forward, and to have a single administrator, and, and we feel we, and when I say we, I mean the combined pension committee who were very active and participated in this process. And if, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, going back to the retiree health savings plan, the one that you got in the slide, it started in 2014. It says the city contributes $350 in the cash value of vacation floating holiday time floated by an eligible employee per year. So that, that is, that is the only inflow of assets into the plan?
Yes, it is, and that, that is the only thing that's allowed. It does not allow, the, the rule that we're under, the IRS rule that we're under with our particular plan does not allow employee contributions.
Okay, so it's very, in that sense, it's very different than an HSA, where?
Yes.
Okay, but it kind of, the inflow is different, but the outflow is kind of similar.
Correct.
The purpose of the fund is the same. The purpose of it is similar. And is that essentially the same for the PEP plan that the collectively bargained employees have? It's the same thing, just a different name, different administrative cost?
Correct.
What, what's the, if it's just the same, I'm not clear on why the administrative costs are different. I, I know that that's the cost of the cost, but like, what, can you explain a little bit more, like, why they're treated differently from the maintenance costs structure?
And so what, when I said they were different, they are different now, while they were in, they, they being the fire union plan, has a different asset cost and an annual fee cost. It's, it's just the contract that they entered into and have. It's actually very typical, the firing, the one that the fire union has right now. This, the proposal that we have, that, that is in this action items, it really proposes the same asset fee for all of the plans that we have, and we have four plans, so everyone is benefiting, has, has the same annual fee, which is $25, I think it's 20, 30, $30 per participant per year, plus an asset fee of 0.325%. So everyone is treated the same.
Okay. All right, yeah, that makes, so before, they had different costs, and now they're being consolidated into, that, that's good. And the, besides the management fees, is there anything else that is changing in this move? I, I didn't see anything, but I just want to make sure that it's mostly about the, the administrative cost changes, right?
Correct. The administrative cost is, is not, is changing, and so everyone will have a much better or a lower fee, and it's actually a significant change. The, I'm just trying to think what else. It's pretty complicated. I've lost my train of thought. I'm sorry.
Okay. So, so they're being consolidated, it's, is it still the same rules that we had in 2014 about what's, what's allowed to be contributed? It's the, it's the same about the $350 a year plus whatever holiday time and vacation? Is that, is that true?
Yes, that, and that applies to-
That doesn't change?
That has not changed, and that applies to non-union employees and the police union because they follow the same rules in that regard, and contributions for the retirement health savings or post-employment health as, as the, all other city employees. The fire union, when they, when they entered in and created their PEP plan, they, they actually negotiated a certain flat fee that is a percentage of salary.
Okay.
And so it's a different-
It's different for them?
Different, different for the fire union than it is for everyone else.
Does the fire plan have, is it, it's a flat fee? It doesn't involve the cash value of vacation and floating time? Because the reason why I ask is because I know that based on earlier discussions, the firefighters' collective bargaining agreement allows them to do things with their, with, with their, their vacation time or their sick time as well, and I just was wondering if there was an impact on that with how much they're allowed to contribute to the plan, or if that had nothing to do with it, just because-
My recollection of the collective bargaining agreement is that it, is that the contribution is a certain percentage of, of a, I forget which classification, a firefighter position, and it's, it's a cer, a flat percentage of that, that classification salary, and that contribution is made, is multiplied by the number of people that are in the pension, in the plan for the fire union, and then it is distributed equally to every one of the people. So their rules are slightly different. They, they are, they are different. They're not slightly different. They are different than the city employees and the police union, because the police union doesn't have that same language in their CBA.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
And so that, that percentage of salary, that's a percentage that is coming out of their salary that is going into the fund, or-
It's an employer contribution.
It's an employer contribution.
Yes. All of these are employer, the employer is paying it.
That, that, now that makes sense.
Yeah.
All right, those are all my questions. I was just trying to understand some of the details.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Councilmember Sangrin, would you please introduce item 13A?
Thank you. I introduce a resolution adopting the City of Thornton, Colorado Post Employment Health Plan and approving the trust plan document and administrative services agreement with Nationwide Retirement Solutions, Inc. for record-keeping and other administrative services of the City of Thornton Post Employment Health Plan, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the resolution has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Sangrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Potembikolo?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember, Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. And Councilmember Sangrin, would you please introduce item 13B?
I introduce a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of the International Association of Firefighters Local 2376 concerning the Post Employment Health Plan, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the resolution has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Sangrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Potembikolo?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. And Councilmember Sangrin, would you please introduce item 13C?
I introduce a resolution approving the Second Amendment to the Administrative Services Agreement for the 457B Deferred Compensation Plans and 401A Defined Contribution Plans of the City with Nationwide Retirement Solutions, Inc., and I move for its approval.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the resolution has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sangrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Potembikolo?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Item 13D is a resolution designating the Snidel Residence located at 12545 Second Street as a local historic landmark. And I'll turn this over to Kyle Kern, Senior Planner, to present this item.
Good evening, council. Thank you for that introduction. As, as noted, I'm Kyle Kerns with the Long Range Planning Division, and here tonight to present to you on a resolution seeking your approval for the Snidel Residence located at 12545 Second Street. And, okay. So again, as noted, that's the purpose of our presentation here tonight before you. We'll kind of go over what the historic designation criteria is that's contained in Chapter 19. We'll give a little historic context for the presentation around what the property's history is. We'll go over staff's review of the criteria, and then what the recommendation is. So the City of Thornton has the Historic Recognition Code, which is Chapter 19 of the City Code. It is our process by which the community, or yourself, or city staff may nominate a property for historic recognition. That property, then, if approved as such, becomes what's called a historic landmark. The City of Thornton only has two recognized properties today, first being the Reitenstein Barn, which is our only locally recognized landmark, and then there's the Eastlake Grain Elevator, which would be eligible for local designation, but is only on the national and state registers of historic places. Criteria for historic designation is in your communication. We'll go over it briefly tonight, and we do have some additional slides to review that with you, so we'll kind of just glaze over it here. But generally, the property needs to be about 50 years old, and needs to meet one of the four sub-criteria that kind of describe its importance. For historic districts, there is additional criteria. Tonight, we're only considering one property, so not a historic district. And as noted, state and national register listings are eligible for local recognition, so in this case, we're also not going to consider that criteria. TASCO, the City, Thornton Arts Sciences Humanities Council, I always feel like I butchered that, so I apologize if I did, they did have to review this before coming to you, and they reviewed that at their May 12 meeting, and they did recommend approval, since that is also a part of the process established in Chapter 19. So there, before you, you see a picture of the nominated property. It is just the front of it. This is the primary structure and the only structure that we're considering for historic designation as a landmark, and that is reviewed a bit more in depthly in the communication, but we are nominating the whole property, but that is the only structure on the property being considered for designation. So just a little history, just for those in the audience that may not have had the time to read the communication, but the town of Eastlake was its own town until the 1990s, when it was annexed into Thornton. The property that you are considering tonight is seven lots of the original, about 225 lots that were plotted, along with the Union Pacific Railroad development that occurred in the town. The property itself is one of the larger properties within Eastlake. It's, like I said, about seven different lots of the original 25 by 100 lots, so it is rather large. The home itself is also exceptionally large and ornate compared to some of the other homes in Eastlake, and the property just sits a little over a half acre. And the primary home itself was built in 1922, so that makes it 101 years old. And it was also owned and maintained by three generations of the Snidel family, which was a prominent family in the Eastlake community. They had at one time run a grocery store, a mercantile, and then several of their children ran the grain elevator and the lumberyard there on the corner. There are some accessory structures on site in the survey provided that the city commissioned in 2000 to review Eastlake for historic designation as a district. That survey does talk about a mercantile shop on the, it may have been moved to the property, but because Adams County records are a little incomplete going that far back, we're unable to substantiate that claim, so we are not considering any of the accessory structures in the designation. So we'll just go over the criteria briefly. 19-12 is the City Code section to consider designation of historic landmarks. Generally speaking, the first criteria, a criterion is the only one that we are reviewing as the other two are either met or not applicable. And as noted previously, the structure has to be at least 50 years old, in this case, that is met as it's 101 years old. And then it has to have importance in one of four sub-criteria there on the screen. Staff has noted that there are two that are met there, so the home itself does contain architectural importance, again, being a rather ornate example of 20th century architecture, and then it also contains social importance, having been a home of a prominent Eastlake family for more than three generations. There is no known archaeological importance or geographical or environmental importance, so those do not apply in this case. The second criteria or criterion B is also satisfied. It's mostly about historic districts, but it does allow for the inclusion of non-contributing structures to be considered in the designation, so in this case, that criterion is satisfied. And the third is about whether or not it is eligible for local designation based on its presence on the state or national registers, and that criterion is not applicable as this property is on neither of those registers. In addition, because the city sign code does not consider these types of signs in residential districts, staff has put into the resolution an allowance for a sign up to six square feet in area of whether it be a pole sign or a monument sign. Those are just kind of fancy words for sign, but those are baked into the resolution for your consideration, as, without it, staff would find it hard to approve a sign in such a residential district, so we did include that in the resolution. So as noted, TASCO did recommend approval. They reviewed the same resolution that you're considering tonight. And the alternative that staff recommends is Alternative 1, that the resolution be approved for the primary structure and associated property at 12545 Second Street as a local historic landmark. And that ends my presentation, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, you, if you go back a slide or two, you mentioned something about, I don't, one slide forward. Says signs are not permitted for individual historic landmarks. It's described in our city code. So you're proposing an exception, but why? I mean, we have this in our code, so what's, what's the motivation for an exception to that?
Sure, I appreciate the question. The applicant had articulated that they may want to put up a sign with historic information about the property. We don't have a really established preservation program to do that ourselves, and so this was more to be proactive, that if they ever so choose to do a historic sign, that, that they would have an allowance to do so. That can certainly be stricken from the resolution if council feels like recommending such.
Well, I mean, it seems like if we want to have signs on our historical landmarks, then rather than make an exception, we look at revisiting the, the motivations behind the prohibition against signs. And, you know, does our code allow for exceptions to this, or, you know, what's the, what's the, I don't, I don't, I'm not familiar with being able to just say, here's an exception to other parts of our city code.
Yeah, so the sign code does not allow for these types of signs in the Eastlake Residential District, which is why the exception was put into the resolution. Our, our historic preservation program is, is new, is just established in 2012, and so there wasn't really a lot of consideration for private property-driven designations. Most of our works thus far has been with city-owned property, which we would control signage on.
So I'd like to ask the city attorney how that works. Can we make an exception? So, I'd like to ask the city attorney how that works. Can we make an exception to an ordinance in our City Code through resolution?
I'm fairly certain that the code allows for variance to the requirements, and I was just trying to pull that up here. And, also, Jessica, do you know this answer? Can you help out, or you cannot help out? Okay, great. All right. Yeah, okay. Erica, did you work on this?
Yes.
Good. Come on down.
Erica Delaney-Lee, Senior Assistant City Attorney. So, as Kyle Kern's just referenced, the program is rather new, and it does say in Section 1914 of our Code, Historic Designation, subsection G, "Any historic marker provided by the city should be installed in a location such that it is clearly visible from a public street." So, the ordinance for the historic preservation does contemplate a sign provided by the city. However, this is the second local designation of a historic structure that we've had, so there isn't currently money budgeted for the city to provide the sign for the historic designation. And so what's been drafted into the resolution is allowance for the property owner to put up their own sign. And I do believe there would be exceptions in the Sign Code if City Council approved it. The Sign Code, as you know, hasn't been updated with the rest of Chapter 18. I imagine that's coming at some point, but I think it would be problematic to delay this. The property owner requested this designation, and to make them wait until we redo the entire Sign Code to put up a sign noting this historic designation would be a bit of a burden. So, like I said, 1914G does contemplate historical markers, and the draft resolution would just set a parameter for how large that could be.
And the other thing we can do is cross-reference when we do amend the Sign Code section and make sure that is, that both the sections are, you know, consistent with each other.
You know, you said it would be a burden. Is that a legal term that you're using? What do you mean by that?
I guess the appropriate would be delay. Like, it's taken two years to work through the Chapter 18 over-update. I don't know that it would take so long, as long, to do the Sign Code, but I do know Sign Codes can be pretty controversial and take some time. Again, like, it's up to council to decide if you want to allow a sign now, or if you want to make the property owner wait until the Sign Code is updated. But I do think, as I stated before, the existing historic designation of Chapter 19 does contemplate a sign to be provided by the city.
And then, another question I have about, you said this would be the second historical designation in the entire city, and so how does that impact the surrounding properties and this property owners or the city's ability to rezone or change, you know, future land-use designations for adjacent properties or this property itself? Like, let's say there's a new owner that wants to redevelop. What would the impact be of that and also neighbors or neighboring properties? Is there some kind of adjacency, externality here that we're looking at?
No, I think, thank you. Yeah, so the way that our Historic Recognition Code is written is, it's almost like historic preservation light. It doesn't get into zoning, so this does not rezone the property. This is just a local designation by resolution of a historic landmark, so it would not impact rezoning to any capacity, because there's not a consideration for rezoning. And it does not affect neighboring properties, as it is limited to just what's described in the application, which is the 12545 Second Street.
And then, again, just to reiterate, this designation would put some restrictions on permits or stuff for this property? What kind of restrictions would this designation put on this property, then?
So, great question. That would be in council's purview. We did not recommend any as staff, and Chapter 19 doesn't really go that far. It only encourages preservation. It uses the word "encourage" specifically. Like I said, it's historic preservation light. This was intended to be more of a placeholder for future work, and we just finished the historic preservation plan just over about a year ago at this point, or maybe not even, I might be mixing my dates, but, so the work has only just begun for the program itself. I would not, I would not go as far to say that our code is perfect, but it does not go as far as rezoning or restrictions unless that were put into the resolution. But again, it only encourages preservation. It does not require it. So, without further conditions added into the resolution, which staff does not recommend, there would be no restriction.
So, what further work, then, do you anticipate from your team about fleshing out this historic preservation? You said it was new, and that there's a lot more work to be done on this historic preservation designation. Could you tell me a little bit more about, like, what your plans are and how it would develop, grow, and change over the next few years, and what the timeline for that might be?
So, I just want to be clear. You're asking what our plan is beyond this property?
Yeah, yeah, just in general, not talking about this property, but you said the historical designation concept in Thornton is relatively new. You said that there's more work to be done on it, so I'd like to know a little bit more information about what that planned work entails and what the timeline of that work includes.
I would just like to interject for a second. The matter that's on the agenda tonight is not future plans for the Historic Preservation Code or the Sign Code. The matter on the agenda tonight is this application under our existing code. So, I think anything that our planning staff gave to you now would really just be ideas that should be later flushed out in planning session and drafting, and so I would respectfully request that you return to the actual application with the recommendation of TASCO to approve it and consider that tonight. And we can certainly put on a, on a planning session, a discussion of future Sign Code and historic preservation revisions that staff might feel is necessary, but I would also suggest we wait until after the Chapter 18 rewrite is complete and passed.
Well, my concern is that I'm not sure that our historical designation rule set in code is mature enough to be, you know, doing something where we haven't been doing it previously. That's why I brought it up.
Councilmember Ayala?
Oh, hang on, just one second. Ms. Hayward? Yeah, I was just going to offer. Thank you for the line of questioning. So, I did, was looking back. So, you did adopt or accept the next steps in terms of the historic preservation plan, I believe it was in December. And so, we'll recirculate that, because that does provide the roadmap in terms of potential next steps. We are entering the strategic plan, and we can make sure that that strategic work and continuing to advance that plan that you accepted is included in that. So, we'll recirculate that document. I think Kyle referenced it, and we'll make sure that that gets back into all of your hands.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Ayala?
Sorry, thanks for the information, Kyle. I was just wondering what the vibe was on TASCO when this was presented?
Yeah, sorry, I've never heard vibe in a meeting like this. So, it was positive. There wasn't full attendance that night, but it was almost a unanimous vote, one abstaining.
Okay. Any other questions from council? I'll just ask one. I do remember, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Bigelow?
Thank you. I believe this vote needs to be held off until December, because the owner of the home is a candidate for City Council, and this should not be something that is used for campaigning. So, I would like to ask that we put this off until December.
Councilmember Sangren?
When was this used as campaigning? I haven't heard a single thing about the owner's name. He applied for it a while ago. It was approved for by TASCO. There is not a single political thing connected to this, and it's ridiculous to make it a thing because he is a candidate. Has nothing to do with this.
Stick to the point.
That is the point. There is nothing political involved here.
So, I have a question.
You know what? My point is that it needs to be put off until December.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have a question related to the designation, because I remember we had a similar discussion when we did the designation for the grain elevator around future land use, and it was, at that time, discussed that it was more symbolic than it was actually any action that went with it. It was more to acknowledge the property, to talk to the community about it, and to make sure that everybody was aware that it existed. It had nothing to do with future land use designation, because we recognized at the time that we couldn't do anything about that. Is that, I mean, I don't know if you were here, but is that the recollection that the staff has?
Yeah, no, that's a fair representation of our local process, and so that, just to be clear on the difference between the two, the grain elevators on the National Register of Historic Places, and so that in itself has a different level of review and typically requires review by federal agencies or state agencies, especially depending on the type of funding. But even as far as, like, preserving those in exact form as they were, and, you know, in the 1920s, for example, you know, if you were to demolish the grain elevator, which I'm not recommending, but if you were to, you know, unless you're taking state or federal dollars, they can't stop that without a restriction, which, in this case, a local recognition doesn't even go that far.
So, it's really just symbolic at this point?
The way our code is written is a fair summary.
Thank you. All right, any additional questions? Councilmember Russell?
Yeah, this being the first single-family residence, and the question is, what authority would the, since you're going down the symbolic route, what authority, if it were approved this evening, would we have later on putting restrictions? Because this being, it really is a kind of magnificent home in the community. I work very close nearby, and I also know that it was used previously for short-term rentals. So, in the spirit of preservation, my question is, will we then have abilities later on to, you know, limit our historic preservation site from being, you know, something that's bachelor and bachelorette parties and take away from the property itself and its prestige?
I may, I may have to ask for some assistance from the attorney's office, but generally, without a different program or a rezoning or anything that affects the actual land use, my guess would be that there isn't much to stop some of those things you've mentioned, like short-term rentals, from occurring without a change to those items. And, you know, I'm not as familiar with programs that base their designation off of resolution, so I would want to defer maybe to Erica again on how that would impact, because I don't want to leave your question hanging out there.
Hi, yes. So, I think our current historic designation process, it doesn't put any limitations on it, so it could be used for a short-term rental. Home occupations could still also be used there unless the Eastlake Zone District has restrictions that would apply. As Kyle mentioned, if we, if we wanted to revisit our short-term rental policy and say it cannot happen in a historic designated property, I think that would have to be prospective going forward and not retroactive against somebody who already received a historic designation. I will also just say, to support this concept of historic preservation light, 1915 is the section that Kyle was referring to. Owners of historic landmarks and owners of properties located within a historic district. Now, a district, to your point about neighboring property owners, that is, a district is an area, and it would impact more than one property owner. This is just the one residence, so the impact should really be limited to that property. But it says that owners of historic landmarks are encouraged to retain the historic characteristics when carrying out any maintenance, repair, construction, alteration, removal, relocation, or demolition. It's encourage. It doesn't prohibit them from carrying out any of those things. And then I also just want to return to 1914, Section B, which says, "The City Council shall make its decision on an application for historic designation based on the recommendation of TASCO, staff reports, and other evidence presented, and on findings that the application meets the requirements of this chapter and other applicable regulations, standards, requirements, or plans adopted by the City Council." So, again, that's 1914B, and in a sense, it doesn't really take into consideration short-term rental, home occupation, like what could be a concurrent use.
So, to clarify on your initial statement, when you first started speaking, then, we would not have any authority to go backwards on any type of restrictions to preserve our historically-designated properties?
I think that would come with legal risks.
Okay.
But keep in mind, we do only have two properties, and one's a barn.
Right, that's why, this is the first home, so we're experiencing, we're learning as we go.
Yes.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Salazar?
So, my question is, since the city doesn't have the money at this point to offer the sign, and you guys go ahead, and we say it's okay to have the sign, but then we change the Sign Code, what happens then?
I think I, I want to make sure I had the last, if we change the Sign Code, then what? Maybe restate your question.
To the sign?
Okay.
Will we be, go back on to the property owner and say, "Now you have to remove it," or are we just going to let it go?
Well, if it, if it was in place and then became non-conforming, for example, the sign could remain so long as they don't change it. And so that would kind of be typical of any sign that no longer meets Sign Code.
Councilmember Ayala?
So, the sign isn't grandfathered in until, is that what you're saying?
Well, so, as, so the resolution, couple things. So, I think I was maybe confused by the question that Councilor Salazar stated, so I just want to make sure I understood the question. So, if the sign were installed, then we updated our Sign Code, what about the sign, then?
So, do we go back to the owner and say, "Sorry"?
Can you put your microphone on just so everybody can hear you?
Sorry, you're going to have to go back, and now we're going to go to the homeowner and say, "You're going to have to remove your sign," or is it going to be grandfathered?
So, yeah, my answer stands. In that case, if the sign doesn't meet code, it would be non-conforming, and it would be allowed to stay so long it was there before the code changed.
And if I could, Councilmember Salazar, I'm not, I don't think Chapter 18 is going to impact this. I think this is coming under 19 and the criteria you have or want to put in place for historic properties. So, I doubt, you know, there would have to be any change based on Chapter 18 decisions. But, you know, I will say, if there's anything you want us to spend more time on or look at, you can certainly, by motion, continue this item, too.
Councilor Ayala, I want to make sure I didn't miss your question, though.
Yeah, I understand. So, it sounds like it would be grandfathered in until it's dilapidated, needs to be replaced, and then have to go to the new Sign Code, as far as, like, what's the new sign?
Correct, yeah. But the resolution does state specifically, and I'll just read it for the sake of discussion here, that one monument sign or pole sign may be permitted on a property of one, you know, solely to convey historic information about the Snidel Residence despite not being described as permitted in Chapter 18, Section 1875. The sign shall meet one of the following standards. So, it can be a monument sign, that's no more than eight square feet, and then a pole sign, no more than eight square feet. So, you know, this can be stricken from the resolution, amended to be different numbers, if you so choose.
Okay. All right. I think that's it.
Any additional questions? All right, Councilmember Sangren, would you please introduce item 13D?
I introduce a resolution designated the Snidel Residence located at 12545 Second Street as a local historic landmark, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the resolution has been moved and seconded. I'll open it for discussion. Councilmember Sangren, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
Thank you. I just want to, just looking at the criteria for the recommendation, a couple things. So we have Tashco recommendation, not a political recommendation, just a recommendation based on criteria regarding the historic recognition. If you also look at the Eastlake, you know, they have had a significant interest in the historic nature of their area. And so they've called out in their own newsletter some of the significances of these historic houses and structures. And so the Snidall family, as we also heard earlier, was a very prominent family in that Eastlake community. And so recognizing this structure and this home, regardless of who it's owned by, there is reasons for the recognition, I think, is something that we should be doing. It was brought forward by the resident. The resident is offering to pay for the sign. City's not going to have to pay for the sign. Why would we turn down someone else wanting to pay for something rather than having the city do it for us? So I think that there's enough criteria in here. The house is over 100 years old. The family that lived, that built it and lived there the longest was significant and a huge part of the community. This is simply a recognition. We can go back later and look at that sign code being the second only in the city. We did discuss a historic preservation, some sort of code update not that long ago. And so here we have one before us, and I think making this a political statement is disgusting. And I hope that we don't allow that to be a part of our decision-making. So I will be in full support of this.
Councilmember Martinez?
Oh, yeah, I do agree with a lot of the motivation for making this a historical landmark. And I'm glad this was brought forward because, you know, I think that it calls to attention, Chapter 19, I forgot the number, but the historical landmark designation. And I think that's, that could be a very powerful tool that we have in our city to preserve the historical landmarks in the city and to make our city, you know, more notable and preserve our history. And, but what I am a little bit uncomfortable with the concept of historical designation light. And so I don't, based off of the ambiguity that we've heard, the request for an exception to our existing sign code, these to me are indicators that our code needs to be updated or fleshed out when it comes to historical designations and what that means, what the implications are going to be. I'm concerned that we've only approved one or two. This is the second application in the history of this program, and we don't have a lot of the details fleshed out. So unless we're going to come back and have that further discussion on the policy regarding what it means to do historical designation and how, you know, we talked about, you know, those ideas being presented to us in December, but they were reiterated tonight. And so if we had a better understanding of where this is going to go, I might be more comfortable. So, you know, I would be, I would be more comfortable if we either postpone this until we have a better understanding or the city had more opportunities. I don't really see how it's burdensome for an applicant to wait when this is a historical thing. It's been preserved for the years. There's no plans that I've heard of to do anything. Otherwise, why would they be applying for historical landmark designation? So I don't see how waiting or putting the actual work in to update our designation, our historical designation, rule set and requirements so that we have less ambiguity and a stronger understanding of what that actually means, how it's going to impact the future property owners, the property owner itself, and their neighbors. I'm not comfortable with supporting that now. Again, I do think it is something that we should look into, that we should bring forward in the future once we do the work on updating the Section 19 on the historical designation. But until we do, I'm not going to be ready to jump into this because I'm concerned about the subsequent applications. By then, we have a whole bunch of potentially hypothetically historical landmarks. We don't know where we're going to go with the actual rule set around historical designation. It's just, it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse on this. So I'd be happy to come back after we take a closer look in updating that section because I do think it does, it is a great fit. But I want to make sure we know, you know, as a city, and we're supportive, what does it actually mean to have historical designation? And I just don't think, I think that we're just not, it's not quite mature enough yet.
Councilmember Russell?
I agree with both previous council comments from Councilmembers Sangren and Justin Martinez. It is a special property. I can find the appreciation in doing a preservation on it. But after my question was answered, not really knowing or having the ability to put safeguards around preserving that property would be premature. So that's really, my gist of it is, maybe we work through some of that code first so that we know the outcomes and that we don't have to backpedal or not even have the ability to backpedal is what it sounds like. If there's things that we just don't agree with in terms of what we want to present as historic preservation sites, this is the first home. So there's no fault in that. This is kind of eye-opening that we didn't have as much information or code written about this. But it is eye-opening to understand that we probably do need to do a little bit more work there. But once that work's done, I would be absolutely in favor of moving this forward, just not right now.
All right, before I go to second round, because Councilmember Sangren has asked to speak for the second and final time, is there anyone who has not spoken yet that would like to speak the first time? Councilmember Ayala?
Yeah. So I was on the Historical Preservation Committee for a short time, and during that time, I took into consideration what it means to have historical properties in our city and how that can be a burden to property owners. And it seems like the code offers the ability for folks to maintain the home in a way that would be still affordable but also have the designation. I think if we were to get too strict with the codes, and we're not even talking about the code right now, we're talking about this specific house and everything that Erica brought up. So I am in support of this. And the big thing too is, you know, having served on Tashco in the past and the work that they do to bring recommendations to this council, I think we have to respect what they bring to the table, and so I'm going to be in support of it.
Anyone else want to speak for the first time? All right, Councilmember Sangren, this will be your second and final time.
Thank you. Again, you know, we have an outside board that is appointed by the council of community members who came together and decided that this was a good idea. They brought this forward. We hear their recommendation. We hear staff's recommendation. Yet we're finding reasons to go against the staff, go against the community members. It's ridiculous. So I guess I would ask, we heard somebody wants to bring it back after the election because they think it's political. Why would we wait if it's not political? It is political. This is political retaliation. So if it's not political retaliation...
And I want to make sure we focus on the emotion on the floor.
I am focusing on the topic. If it's not political retaliation, then when can we bring it back with more information?
I'm sorry, I would have been cut off by now. That's ridiculous.
I'm sorry. We need to have... A point of order that I'm stopped from talking.
Mayor Protam, I've given a point of order. We are focusing on the motion on the floor.
Thank you. So when would we be able to bring this back with more information that would support what the staff and outside board recommendation is, that would hopefully bring to light enough evidence and information to allow for a vote to happen?
All right, any additional discussion? Well, we're in discussion, and we're not asking questions at this point, but Ms. Yellico?
Yeah, I just wanted to note, you know, the evidence on the record tonight and in the staff report and from Tashco is the application, in their opinion, meets the requirements of our existing code. So I think if council wants additional information on something in the application or, you know, requires additional information, that would be a reason to continue this. But a reason to continue it really should not be the creation of a new code or amending our code because the applicant filed under this code, and we have evidence on the record that both the staff and Tashco, you know, can believe that this meets the requirement of our current Chapter 19, if that makes sense. I wanted to give that warning.
Can I add something?
Yes, sorry.
In addition, if the sign is the crux of the issue, like staff just sort of threw out an idea, a limitation of size. If that size is not restrictive enough and you want a smaller sign, or if you want to approve the application conditional on a sign meeting any changed sign code moving forward, that's also something that could be written in as a condition. But I just wanted to say there is some flexibility with the sign and how you address it.
Or that section could be completely removed from the resolution if you do not want to make a ruling on allowing a monument sign.
And just a reminder, on the point of order, the focus has to be on the motion on the floor. It has to focus not on the intent or potential intent of other people that are speaking but on the motion itself. Mayor Protam, Bigelow?
So I just wanted to bring up two things. Tammy, you just brought up that, you know, we could change a couple things if we so chose. I think there's two issues with this. One is the sign code can't be reversed. If you're saying that if we approve this, but then moving forward, we change the code, we can't change this one because it's already approved. Secondly, as far as the code for historic sites, we're saying this property has been used as an Airbnb, and we would like to say if it's a historic site, it should not be used as an Airbnb. That would have to be a change in the code, which we do have a right to change. So albeit that they may have applied under certain things, we as the council have a right to change that at any time.
You do have a right to change Chapter 19 at any time. And you can also put additional limitations in this resolution that are not inconsistent with the current code. You know, you could either remove the permission for one sign, or you could limit the permission only to, you know, certain limitations that you either come up with or staff recommends to you. Or, you know, you can put additional limitations in this. But in terms of limiting use, I don't believe that's currently in Chapter 19. So, and I think they would have a right under, you know, their zoning and your land use provisions to put any use there that's, that's a use, you know, that they can have under our other sections of code.
So then I still recommend that we need to change that code before making a decision on this.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Do you have any additional discussion?
No, thank you.
All right, another call for final discussion? I'll add my comments as well. I appreciate bringing this forward. I've been looking through the documentation and learning the history of the property, and it's very unique to the area, which we all know Eastlake is very unique to our entire city. And I know that this property, as well as several others, have been looking at the opportunity to find a way to designate symbolically the historical significance of the area, and this was a way to do it. I believe that it's very simple, and it doesn't change the way that we do business in the city, and it's, but it's a nice thing to do in the community, so I am going to support it tonight. And with that, would you please pull the council? Councilmember Enring?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Protam, Bigelow? Councilmember Salazar?
No.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
No.
Councilmember Russell?
No.
Councilmember Sangren?
Yes.
Motion failed four to four, Your Honor. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the next item. Item 13E is a resolution consenting to the dissolution of the Lambertson Lakes Metropolitan District. And I'll turn this over to Matt Court, Senior Assistant City Attorney, to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, City Council. My name is Matt Court. I'm an Assistant City Attorney, excuse me. And tonight, I'm going to provide you with some information about a request that the city received to consent to the dissolution of the Lambertson Lakes Metropolitan District. I'm going to touch on some, a brief background about the metro district itself and then the request that the district provided to the city. I'm going to give some very brief background on the dissolution procedure and then also touch on what the next steps in the process would look like. So the Lambertson Lakes Metro District was organized in the year 2000 after city council approved the district service plan in August of that year. It is a residential district, and you can see the boundary map on your screen in front of you, generally located south of 104th Avenue and east of Washington Street. Like many, most, all metro districts, it was organized to design, finance, and construct improvements within its boundaries in order to support the residences that would eventually be constructed there. So streets, water, traffic and safety controls, parks and recreation, those types of improvements. The build-out was completed in about 2008, and since that time, it has become a resident-controlled Board of Directors within this metro district. Consistent with the city's model service plan, it is authorized to issue a mill levy of up to 50 mils. During its kind of peak debt repayment period, it wasn't even reaching the 50-mil threshold. It was about 42, and that has really tapered off over the last several years. I believe the last time it certified a mill levy, it was like five mils or something. So not a significant tax burden from the district for the residents within the district. But of kind of notable significance for the conversation this evening, the district did pay off its bonded debt in 2024 and does not have any current outstanding indebtedness or related financial obligations. And so as a result of paying off those bonds in 2024, the district reached out to the city with a request that city council consent to the dissolution of the district. That was kind of on the heels of the district Board of Directors itself adopting its own resolution in November 2024 to kind of kick off this process, this dissolution process. That board authorized dissolution of itself essentially because it has fulfilled the purpose for which it was created. So since we received that notice, we've been in contact, me being city staff, city attorney's office has been in contact with the legal counsel for this metro district. They've represented to us that the district has no outstanding debt, doesn't operate or maintain any facilities, and doesn't have any employees or assets. It really is in the winding up stages of what this district was intended to do. There's one kind of contractual obligation that is hanging out there that we've discussed with the district. They have been proactively trying to pursue a developer that they owe accrued interest to under this 2001 agreement that the district entered into, but have been unsuccessful in those efforts. They've published notice in the newspaper. They have reached out to this developer's registered agent. They have even kind of contacted the district court to let them know what is going on and try and put together a plan for, in the event that they aren't able to track down this developer and pay this accrued interest that is owed. Ultimately, what is being decided here, unless the district court were to direct otherwise, is that those funds that the district has to pay that accrued interest would be transferred to the Lambertson Lakes Homeowners Association along with any other kind of remaining funds or property or anything like that that the district may have. So that would be transferred to the homeowners association for the benefit of the residents of the district. So the dissolution process itself is a product of statute. It is all set out in the Colorado Revised Statutes. As I mentioned, the district kind of played its first part in the process by passing its, adopting its resolution, its dissolution resolution, which kind of sets the wheels in motion. And from there, it has a couple different options. Because this district is wholly located within the city of Thornton, they have the ability to ask for city council's consent to dissolve. The alternative to that is to hold an election of the residents and ask... The alternative to that is to hold an election of the residents and ask them to vote on dissolution, which is why the, the district is in front of you tonight or why this, this resolution is in front of you tonight, is to try and avoid the time and expense of a resident election for, for something like this. Should the city council consent to this dissolution, then the district will take all of its records and papers and it will petition the Addams County District Court for dissolution. And then the district court would essentially look at the statute and make sure that they've met the requirements and then, and then formally dissolve the district. Also want to note that the districts, or the city's model service plan contemplates metropolitan districts kind of initiating this process on their own, once they have fulfilled the purpose for which they've been organized. So next steps, again, city council will be considering the resolution tonight to consent to the dissolution. If it's adopted, the district will continue through the process and petition the district court. If for some reason that, that resolution is not adopted, then the district would be required to hold an election of its residents. So I believe that there is a representative of the district here with us this evening. You've also got staffs. If you've got any questions about this resolution or this process, I am happy to do my best to answer them.
Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah. So once this, if this does get dissolved, well, I guess, since there's no more debt, have the mils been reduced from, from the metro district?
Yeah, I, I think, and if there is a district representative here this evening, I think, okay, great, I think it is zero for this year, if that's correct.
The only mils the district is?
I'm going to ask you to come to the microphone, just because people online can't hear you otherwise.
Hello, my name is Tate Crosby. I'm an attorney at White Bear Local Government, or WBA Local Government Law and we serve as general counsel to the Lambertson Lakes Metropolitan District. Once the dis, the last time that the district imposed its debt service mill levy was for collection in 2024. And this past December, it certified only approximately five mils for operations and maintenance to pay for the administrative functions of the district. At this time, the district does not anticipate the need to issue any additional debt and will not be imposing a mill levy in the future.
Okay. So if this is dissolved, then that five mils for administrative would also be gone?
Correct.
Okay.
Any additional questions? All right, hearing none. Councilmember Martinez, would you please introduce item 13E?
Absolutely. I'd like to introduce a item 13B, a resolution consenting to the dissolution of the Lambertson Lakes Metropolitan District, and I move for its approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the resolution has been moved and seconded. I'll open it for discussion. Councilmember Martinez, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
I just want to say congratulations to all the residents of Lambertson Lakes and having their property taxes reduced by however many mils are no longer needed to service their debt. And I'm sure that's a huge relief for many of the folks, all the folks who live down there. So I'm happy to, happy to hear this.
Any additional discussion? All right, please poll the council.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bigelow?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Sangrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Enright?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item 13F is a resolution authorizing the use of the administrative review process for confluence development at 144th Avenue and Washington Street pursuant to Section 18-58 of the Thornton City Code. And I'll turn this over to Adam Kruger, Economic Development Director, to present this item.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Purpose is to seek economic significance designation for a development located in the northwest corner of 144th Avenue and Washington Street called Thornton Commons would be developed by Confluence Development. Can talk about what economic significance is, the location of the project and scope, requirements for economic significance, and then the staff recommendation. So what is economic significance? Per the code, Section 1858, it authorizes administrative development review process for economic development projects. So if the site is annexed and zoned for the proposed use, it allows administrative approval process for the conceptual site plan and the development permit, also any specific use permits. Location of the project, as I mentioned, is at the northwest corner of 144th and Washington Street. This is the, their site plan as it sits today. This would be for phases one and two. You can see the intent of this project. I'm going to read it right from what the developer provided, is a theme of our commercial hub with destinations that serve as vibrant public spaces. Public spaces include a blend of retail, dining, convenience and hospitality. And it creates, kind of create a sense of place. In the middle of there, they've got a, kind of a restaurant hub that they're, they're talking about creating that would be a nice public space. And then you can see other, other amenities around there. So the numbers that we have on here are the requirements per our code for economic significance. And then the check marks, I got pretty creative with PowerPoint, are, the light blue check marks are basically how it meets those, those criteria. So I'll run through these. I got a couple of slides on this. So the first criteria is application shall be non-residential or mixed-use developments where at least 50% of development is non-residential. Phases one and two, which are all that we're asking for here, comprise entirely of non-residential uses. Application does not require a zone change is requirement number two. It does fit in the regional commercial zoning. Also has to meet the requirements for the zoning district in which it's located. Each of the proposed uses intended for the project are allowed within their regional commercial district. I'll read those again. Mix of retail, services, sit-down restaurants, convenience, lodging and creating gathering spaces for, for the community. For, use will not be detriment to the public health, safety or welfare. This will be developed per code, well-regulated, develop uses that promote walkability, economic vitality and activate a long vacant site. Site's never been developed. The use will significantly increase sales, use of property taxes or other revenues to the city, or significantly increase employment, or advance the redevelopment of the property or provide other significant benefits as determined by the city council. Project will produce sales tax. Some estimates provided by the, by the developer, around $615,000 in sales tax annually, $285,000 in lodging tax per year and $600,000 in property tax. It's about one and a half million per year in just those, just those taxing entities. It will support the growing employment area to the north. As council is aware, there's a lot of new jobs and we talked about some of those earlier coming into the north. This will, this will provide much-needed amenities for them. It will also advance critical infrastructure improvements in the area as they do their full buildout of the site. So this project meets, oh, I'm sorry, extra slide there. This project meets the code requirements that, that are laid out there. So staff recommends approval of the resolution authorizing the use of administrative review process for commercial pad sites contained in phases one and two for the proposed Thornton Commons. Happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions from council? All right, hearing none. Councilmember Russell, would you please introduce item 13F?
Yes, I'd like to introduce a resolution authorizing the use of the administrative review process for the confluence development at 144th Avenue and Washington Street pursuant to Section 18-58 of the Thornton City Code, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the resolution has been moved and seconded. I'll open it for discussion. Councilmember Russell, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
Yeah, I think this looks like an exciting project as we hear from a lot of constituents up north that the need for more restaurants, space is, is highly requested. And I think it's a unique design too, with the walkability inside of there. I think it's going to create a really nice gathering space and where there's various options to try things out and look forward to the rest of the potential site and what that will look like in the future. But overall, it's, it's a solid development in my opinion and it's not like everything else. So that's a, a great app.
Any other discussion? I'll add, Mayor Protem Bigelow?
I just wanted to add to that, that I agree with councilmember Russell. This is exactly what our residents have been asking for, for a long time. So I'm excited about the process. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'll add my comments as well. I agree with my colleagues in Ward Four. As I live down the street from the site, I would be very excited to see what's coming in there and I know all of my neighbors would be as well. Would you please poll the council?
Mayor Protem Bigelow?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Sangrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Enright?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item 13G is an ordinance amending city council's rules of order and procedure to move the audience participation portion of the agenda before public hearings. And I'll turn this over to Tammy Yellico, our city attorney, to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. So city council can establish its own rules with regard to the conduct of its meeting and it does so by ordinance. And this proposed ordinance would amend Section 5 of your rules, Order of Business, and it would make that audience participation follow presentations on the agenda as item eight, and it would move public hearings down to occur immediately after audience participation as item nine on your agenda going forward.
Are there any questions? All right, councilmember Salazar, would you please introduce item 13F?
I introduce an ordinance amending city council's rules of order and procedure to move the audience participation portion of the agenda to be for public hearings and I ask for it to be immediately approved.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the ordinance on first reading has been moved and seconded. I'll open it for discussion. Councilmember Salazar, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
Again, I'm going to say that week after week, I watch my constituents leave and unfortunately they, they have a right to speak and because they have many things that present to them that they need to leave, and I just find it sad that, you know, they're, they're leaving and they're not being able to speak.
I'll add a final comment as well. I definitely appreciate the, the conversation and the challenge because I think this is something we've dealt with for many, many years of what is the most appropriate place for public comment to be on the agenda. And I, I'm not going to support tonight only because I wanted to have some discussion in our planning sessions and we haven't had that opportunity to do that. I don't necessarily disagree. I just disagree with the process. Would you please poll the council?
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
No.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Sangrin?
No.
Councilmember Enright?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bigelow?
Yes.
Motion passed six to two, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Item 14 is adjournment and hearing no further business. The meeting is now adjourned at 9:45 PM.